Okay, being 6:00 PM on Monday, January 22, 2018, we'll call and order the Winuski City Council Meeting. Ask that everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Brian Corrigan.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up tonight is a gender review, and we do have a proposal to shift an agenda item. We're requesting to move, in the interest of some attendees, move item E up to, it will effectively become, item C.
Item D.
Item D, pardon me. Okay, so just switch E and D?
Yep.
So we're gonna reorder that and have the Planning Commission Housing Commission Goals Report come before the FY '18 policy priorities and strategy update for housing. Help with the flow. Any other concerns in regards to tonight's agenda in the ordering? Okay, so seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Remind you that there's an agenda in the back of the room. Also remind you, we would appreciate if everybody can please make sure to sign the sign-in sheet before they go. If you're not on staff or part of council, thank you very much for doing that. Are there any items that folks in the crowd would like to address the council about city business on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, so seeing and hearing none, close public comment, move on to consent agenda. We have three items on for tonight's consent agenda. We have the City Council minutes of January 16th, 2018. We also have the warrants for payroll from period 12/31/17 to 1/13/2018, and we have job description for accounting clerk, which looked like it had raised a few flags in the last meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Any comments, questions, concerns in regards to the consent agenda? From the public, seeing and hearing none, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda as provided to us.
Second.
Motion by Brian Corrigan, second by Nicole. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, if everybody please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries, consent agenda is approved as presented. City update.
Great, thank you. Just a few updates this week. We had a great arts in nature event yesterday on Sunday. Had 20 people sign up and go through that art in nature event, which was great. We also had 40 people show up for basketball. Basketball is really hot this year, which is wonderful. Lots of kiddos and families coming out. Also wanted to remind everyone that we are having a four-on-four dodgeball tournament on Thursday, February 8th at 6 o'clock at the school. So if people are interested in that and have teams they want to join, go to the city website and register for that event. Also, on the community services front, there's a community service commission meeting on Wednesday evening here at 6:30. The main thrust of that agenda will be an update on pool with the pool engineer here to provide an update on the preliminary engineering. So members of the public are welcome to that commission meeting to come and hear the update on where we are with plans to rebuild the Myers Pool. The next noise compatibility program meeting at the airport, this is the process that the Burlington Airport is going through to look at, to put forth a funding request to the FAA for noise reduction mitigation measures. The next meeting for that is tomorrow night at 5 o'clock at the airport. People are welcome to attend that meeting. If you're not interested in attending yet another night meeting, you can follow the progress at www.btv sound dot com. So that's the airport code for Burlington, b-t-v-sound dot com. And I am attending those meetings as well. And finally, we're having the first steering committee meeting on Wednesday morning for the committee outreach program, which is the mental health support program through the Public Safety Department here on, so the first steering committee meeting will be next, this Wednesday morning. We're talking about the MOU that we will bring forward to the elected bodies to sign to participate in that program, as well as hear updates on their hiring process. So we are moving forward with that quickly. That's all I have.
We'll turn it over now to council for council reports.
Sure. So I don't have anything from the Public Safety Commission realm. I think you all heard from the Public Safety Commission members more directly last council meeting, and we haven't had a meeting since then. But I did want to share, I was down in Augusta, Georgia this weekend, and happened to meet somebody who's on the city council in Clarkston, Georgia, which is a city that is about 1.4 miles square, and sounds like they share a lot of similarities with Winuski. They've got over 60 languages spoken in that 1.4 square miles. They're in a period of economic revitalization like we are. So it was just really cool to make that connection, and I hope we can foster a good relationship, you know, between that community and hopefully share some tips, tricks, and best practices between us and them for how we serve what sounds like a pretty similar community.
Oh, nice. Thank you. I was just gonna make sure everyone knew about the commission meeting, but I think we're good.
In terms of some generalums, I'll start by piggybacking on a couple things. Just to mention around the airport, as we know, folks are backing Montpelier, doing lots of productive things and making lots of great things happen. So as the governance discussion has progressed between ourselves and South Burlington and Burlington, we, I can report that we're having really good conversations. So Mayor Weinberger and Helen Reilly and I are on a regular meeting schedule in regards to trying to find some progress towards maybe some governance reviews and a number of other items. So hoping to have some reports back on that soon. However, in the absence of some concrete action over the last year-plus that the councils asked for some action around it from the airport, we have supported two pieces of legislation that are moving forward right now in Gov Ops and one in transportation around potential governance research for airport, and also around potential charter changes that could impact the amount of input other communities may have on airport operations and the way decisions are made there. So I want to make folks aware of that. And also update you that in two days, Mayor's Coalition's gonna have our press conference to outline legislative priorities. I'll be carrying the economic development banner, and specifically in regards to tonight's topics around potential funds for housing stock improvement in communities that can be leveraged alongside communities revolving loan funds or housing trust funds, which we have. So Montpelier's taking some attention back as, sorry, the legislators back in session. I mean, you don't like the global reference to it being Montpelier, but we'll continue to stay with our representatives there. And Planning Commission is Thursday, and just want to give a big shout-out to staff over the last couple of weeks in support in the past couple of months of the Main Street Revitalization Project and the work that's been done to get us to the point where we made those alternative selections last week. But just, that's been a tremendous lift, too, from the perspective of the Public Works Commission and the Planning Commission. So thanks to those bodies and all the volunteers that serve in those boards for doing all that work.
I have nothing more to report than what you just reported for us, unfortunately.
No.
Seth and I just wrapped up the meeting with Jesse. We have a plan in place to work on extension of the city manager's contract at the same time as we fulfill our obligation to conduct an annual evaluation with the city manager. So the timeline that we have set out is ambitious, but we have every confidence that we'll be able to pull it off so that the council can finalize both the evaluation and the contract at the last meeting on February 20th.
The last meeting of this body is...
Last meeting of this body is, it's currently comprised.
Constructed.
Yeah.
Very good. And, you know, just one more note to remind folks that over the next couple of weeks, they're gonna, next three and a half, four weeks, there's gonna be a number of opportunities to learn about the budget. We're gonna talk about the budget a lot tonight, but really encourage folks at home, and a lot of people just watch the update section, to take time to sit down and watch one of the CCTV specials, one of the filmings of these sessions where you get to see the budgets comprised. We're also gonna do a community dinner later in February, date exact to be determined. We'll be at the senior center at some point giving a presentation on the budget. But not only is there the budget this year, but we also have the two ballot items going forward. A net neutral impacted taxpayer bond around doing improvements at the wastewater facility, and also the issue of participation in what will be regional dispatch. So encourage folks to reach out to counselors and city staff. Primary Resources, always a good place to get information on topics like that as we head into budget season, and hope you can catch one of those presentations coming up. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to regular items. So first up tonight, item A, we have approval appointment of Mary Hussmane as an alternate to the full member of the Community Services Commission.
Hey, so I think the memo in the packet was fairly self-explanatory, but as you all recall, not that long ago, we appointed Mary as an alternate December 18th to the commission. In the interim, got written notice from Fozdill that he was interested in stepping down from his role with the commission, and so Mary has asked to be promoted to full member. And given that not only do their terms align, but Mary, I think, showed a lot of excitement and interest in things to contribute, I think it'd be a great fit if we were able to move her into that full member role. And then we'll have two alternate seats that are vacant on the commission.
That's awesome. Did you have somebody spring at the chair position, too?
We will find out on Wednesday. That's on the agenda to see how much arm twisting I have to do.
There's so many people that, like, politicking behind the scene.
Yeah. I don't know about this group. Yeah, we'll have that figured out Wednesday.
Good. Any questions? We spoke to Mary previously as an appointment to, as an alternate. Any questions for Ray in regards to appointment of Mary Hussmane from an alternate to full member status? Questions from council? Any questions or concerns from the public on commission selection process? So seeing, hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval of Mary Hussmane to full member of the Community Service Commission?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Brian Sweeney, second by Brian Corrigan. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, Champlain Housing Trust VCDP Loan Extension.
So the next two items actually relate to Champlain Housing Trust. So Heather's here, but Michael Monte, who's the CFO of Champlain Housing Trust, is also here. Michael, if you want to come.
You can come right out and sit with me.
To be on camera, Michael.
So the Champlain Housing Trust is requesting that the city of Winuski authorize an extension of an existing Vermont community development program, VCDP-funded loan for affordable rental housing properties at 53 through 67 East Spring Street that are owned by 1306 Spring Street Limited Partnership. And this is largely a courtesy and a formality, as the Champlain Housing Trust acts as the administrator and the custodian of the funds, and the city has no legal standing or signatory authority on the loan. So what we're looking for really is just a vote of support for this. And you've received a memo from Amy Dimitrovic at Champlain Housing Trust as part of your packet, although the memo mentioned specifically a resolution I've spoken with Amy and said would just a simple vote in support of this do, and she said absolutely that would be fine. Do you have any questions?
I really have nothing to add. It's, you know, one of those quirky little things that we got, and we intend to put a lot of money into these 10 units, apartments plus ones in Winuski, cultures that are connected to, but that's gonna be in a couple of years. So we extend the loan for now. We'll come back in two years with more permanent status for everything, so.
Great. Well, and first and foremost, thanks for the work that Champlain Housing Trust does and the partnership that we've had with your organization. You've made a tremendous impact in our community and the region.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So it's been a terrific partnership, and we're excited to see it continue. This agreement aside, into the future. So thanks for joining us, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Questions for Michael or Heather in regards to this particular item?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments from the public? Okay, so seeing and hearing none, I entertain an approval for, we'll say, the Champlain Housing Trust VCDP Loan Extension.
Agreed.
Motion by Brian, second by, excuse me, Brian Corrigan, second by Eric. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. And we'll move right into services agreement with Champlain Housing Trust for 57 West Allen Street.
So 57 West Allen Street is known as the Allen House, owned by Champlain Housing Trust and operated by the Howard Center, specifically serves low-income individuals who suffer from mental health illness, or mental illness. We have, over the last few months done, we've looked pretty extensively, Michael and I, into this parcel and gotten legal opinions. Our city attorneys do say that this is a tax-exempt parcel, or would qualify as a tax-exempt parcel. So CHT was willing to talk with us about a services agreement, considering that we do provide a significant amount of municipal services to this property. So Michael and I have gone through and developed this letter of agreement and are asking for your support of it tonight. It has been reviewed by our municipal attorney as well. This would recoup about $9,000 a year, starting in this first year, and then escalate from there, which would make us almost whole in the municipal property taxes we would lose. So we are asking for your consideration. It is on as a discussion item for tonight, but asking for your consideration of the services agreement and any questions you may have.
And Michael, did I miss anything?
No, not at all. The key part of this is it allows us to actually go ahead and invest $100,000, $150,000 also in improvements to the property. So this basically assists that. Once we do this, financing gets different in terms of how well we could do, and we can go in to make some major improvements. So there'd be some, there's a good thing, too, as well for the property, as well as keeping the city whole. So we thought this was a nice, a nice whole package.
Great.
And we appreciate the work that the, your town manager has done on this so far. So, thank you.
Good. And just for those at home, 57 West Allen Street, just the two-sentence summary of the property itself and what happens there in terms of...
So it's a three-story SRO, single-room occupancy. We don't usually do single-room occupancies now as much. We do have a few in Burlington still. We tend to do more efficiencies, you know, smaller apartments. But we do have some, and this one works pretty well from who it's serving. A lot, a lot of high-income folks here, mostly very low-income, similar challenges. And again, we provide, we make sure we have some money from Howard there with services to continue to support, support the folks who are living there.
On-site supportive services, too. Good. Questions, concerns, comments from council for Michael or for Jesse on this? Any questions, concerns, comments from the public? So seeing and hearing none, this is actually on as a discussion item. I think, given the lack of extensive back and forth on this one, we could put that into the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come back more often. This is great.
Anytime.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Yep, thanks.
I think we probably have a few reasons to have you back. All right, we'll move to item D, which is now discussion of the Planning Commission, Housing Commission, Housing Goals Report.
Do you have Christine Lot and tell us the board come up with me?
Would you guys prefer to click yourselves as we go through the PowerPoint?
I kind of would.
You could, okay.
Christine kind of would.
Excellent. Thank you so, so much. Okay, so just to give a little bit of background on this report, in 2016, city council received a housing needs assessment for the city from students of the UVM Masters in Public Administration Program. That was then passed along to the planning commission. The number-one recommendation on that was to create a housing commission. So planning commission made that recommendation, and we convened a housing commission, basically to look at overall goals and vision of housing in the city. What mix are we looking for? Where are there gaps? What do we need to fill in? And that will also, as, as the housing commission comes up with those targets and that vision, that will also feed into our municipal plan in the housing chapter. In order to hit the ground running, city staff did targeted outreach to get some area experts in various pieces of the housing puzzle. So we convened a board that's comprised of members that includes representation from the Winuski Housing Authority Board, Burlington Housing Authority, Vermont Housing Finance Agency, Vermont Refugee Resettlement Program, the superintendent of the Winuski School District, a former city counselor, and a professional data analyst. I'd like to recognize and thank members of the housing commission for their contributions of time and expertise. They are Robert Millar, Mike Oler, Anna Wagling, who's here in the audience. Hi, Anna. Bobby Arnell, Sean McManon, Chris Melnick, Christine Lot, who is right here and will be presenting to you this evening, Leslie Black Plume, and our council liaison is Mayor Seth Leonard. So thank you to all of you. I'd also like to thank the planning commission, who received these recommendations initially and gave us some very insightful suggestions for how we can go forward. Our strategy has been, oh, this is very...
Oh, same.
Change it.
Excellent.
It's gonna pop up.
They never change it.
Because we've been on a pretty tight timeline, we stood up the housing commission in August. The first meeting was in August, and there have been four meetings since then, one of which was meeting to present to the planning commission. We decided to strategize by examining rental housing first. The reasoning behind that is because there's such rapid development of rental housing in the city that that can quickly change what our housing stock is, whereas the, uh, homeownership market won't change so quickly. So we took the time to really focus in on rental housing. The Housing Commission reviewed and analyzed a broad range of data over the last few months. And that is, the process to date is kind of listed up here for you. Uh, some of the things we looked at were Winuski household demographics, comparisons of the Winuski rental market to surrounding municipalities, uh, the number of existing subsidized housing units, affordability of our current stock by income brackets, housing targets developed in other Chittenden County municipalities, and potential gaps in our available rental housing. Um, some of the new data that we received this year from our landlord rental registry was tremendously helpful throughout this process. And as we go through this presentation, although we're not going to show you all of the data that we looked at, you'll be able to see some of the key points that were taken from census data, as well as some of the key points that were taken from the landlord rental registry. And what we did with that is, um, John Audi was kind enough to offer to me an opportunity to send out a letter to the landlord registry and ask them to voluntarily share information about number of bedrooms per unit and the price that they were charging in rent for those. So I had an unbelievable response rate to that. So we got some very, very good information from that. And that will be presented as part of this this evening. Okay, so I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Housing Commissioner Christine Lot first, who will kind of go through our process and some of the high key points of the data that we looked at. And then we'll go on to Planning Commissioner Palace Zaporin, who will present the rental housing recommendations themselves.
All right. So the first thing that we looked at, as far as the data goes, is, um, subsidized housing in Winuski. And we found there's, of the rental market here, thirty-six percent of the units are, um, project-based subsidized. And you can see here, compared to, you know, the other parts of the other cities in the county, we're at the top end. Um, I think the average here is around twenty-two percent. So we're pretty high above that. Um, when you add in tenant-based vouchers, which, again, compared to the county, we are outperforming there as well, we're looking at over fifty percent of rental units, um, restricted to, to low-income folks. So after taking a look at that data, um, we then reviewed the landlord registry data, which Heather described. Almost seventy percent of landlords actually provided this information to us. And so here's the breakdown of the information that we received. So we already know about the thirty-six percent project-based subsidized. Of the units that were then reported, um, we can extrapolate here that twenty-four percent of our existing units are market, seven percent are luxury. So that's what's confirmed by the landlord reporting. Thirty-three percent of units are unreported. Um, because of the tight, um, administration of subsidies, we know that those are market-to-market plus. Uh, we also received the rental information from landlords, which most of us were pretty surprised by this. The median rents in the area are, are well under the HUD fair market rates. Um, so you can see here, a couple hundred dollars lower in most of these ranges.
Do you want to speak to the ones that didn't report, though?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, most of the non-reporting units are from our larger rental projects. So the list is here on the slide, um, City Lights, Woolen Mill, Winuski Block and Mill House. Um, River Run, which we know are luxury units, was included in the unit type distribution analysis, but not in the pricing, because the actual costs weren't reported there either. So we also collected data on household sizes and, and income levels. So the key thing that we're seeing here is that even at like the thirty percent maximum affordable, um, thirty percent of income is the maximum affordable rent, this is still also well above the median rent prices that are being reported in our area. Um, we looked a little bit too at, like, household size and unit size. Um, you can see here that about seventy percent of household of renters, it's only one or two people per household, which also aligns with our existing units. Um, it's about seventy-six percent are in the studio-to-two-bedroom range. Um, and then the higher in, um, larger units, so we have like thirteen percent that are larger households, four and above, and twenty-three, you know, twenty-three percent of units left fit there. So we, we see some alignment there in the unit, the unit size versus household. Um, looking at that, the income data for the area, we also determined that seventy-two percent of renter households are low-income in Winuski. So that's, you know, eighty percent of area median income or lower. So we have thirty-six percent of our units project-based subsidized, seventeen percent voucher-based subsidized. So fifty-four percent of rental units being restricted to those earning less than eighty percent AMI. And then we also found from the reported, the landlord reporting data that additional thirty-six percent of our market-rate units are affordable to, to folks making, um, less than eighty percent AMI. So that's eighty-four percent of housing units that are available to, to low-income folks. So we're covering the existing seventy-two percent of the, of the households that are low-income. And what we're also seeing there then is like a pinch on market rates that are affordable to people making middle income. So again, this is a, a comparison of like the amount of stock available against the county and our surrounding cities. And in, in these project-based units, those are completely income-restricted. So they're just not even available to, to middle-income earners. You know, voucher-based follows the tenant, so that could change, but that's still, as you can see here, a lower amount, um, compared to the rest of the county. We're, we have twelve and a half percent fewer available units to, to folks making middle income. Oh, middle income would be people making eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent of area median income. Um, so the key findings from all of the data that we looked at are that we're, we're outperforming on our affordable housing against the region. We have a high level of, of low-income households, seventy-two percent. Eighty-four percent of our reported units are, are affordable to low-income. Um, income-restricted units for people earning less than eighty percent make up a larger share in Winuski than in our surrounding area. And market-rate rentals that are available to people not income-restricted is a smaller share of our overall stock. Like, we see a gap there. Winuski also has a high level of poverty indicated by that, the amount of house, rental households that are low-income. And there's growing income disparity between renters and homeowners. So the big picture story here is that we've got a lack of housing available to middle-income folks. We, we have a sufficient amount to cover low-income folks at this time, and so we're seeing that gap. And this is something that we want to address to prevent this income disparity from growing more in the future. Um, some things that we have also talked about in the commission are the importance of economically integrating our neighborhoods. You know, so we, we want to deter this growing income gap. Um, and we also want to avoid concentrated poverty, um, in the way that the housing is distributed in Winuski. So we, you know, we, we've done a lot of reading on this. There's a, a lot of research out there to, to show some of the negative effects of concentrated poverty. You know, lower-quality housing, there's an impact on schools, a great impact on our children in the community. Um, a couple of other common themes here are the access to healthy foods and, and a mismatch between jobs and location. Versus if we could get more economic integration in the community, this improves our schools, this improves employment outcomes. It's good for like economic growth, it's good for the kids, um, and, and health outcomes. There are, there's a lot of information out there specifically around how economic, how concentration of poverty impacts schools and children. Um, encouraging economic integration provides, it gives children more, uh, examples, more information. Um, you help spread resources better. Uh, and there's also information, or research that just improving outcomes of children in schools has a, a correlation to the city's economic success as well and growth there. So the data story here is that we are, we're looking to address this gap in our housing, um, for these reasons. And I want to pass it to Palace here to talk about the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so we took a look at, um, the target, um, target numbers, um, set forth by some of our neighboring communities. So, um, South Burlington and Williston had set ten-year targets. Um, South Burlington had wanted the distribution, you see at the top left-hand corner, um, of having seventy-five percent of their, um, rental stock be affordable by people earning less than eighty percent AMI by twenty-twenty-five. Um, thirteen percent for eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, and twelve percent for over one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI. Um, so this is a goal that they hope to achieve by twenty-twenty-five. Williston, below that, you see twenty percent for the less than eighty percent AMI as their goal by twenty-twenty-four. Um, you'll note our current numbers below, um, which Christine has already covered. Um, right now, as we stand, eighty-four percent of our rental stock is affordable by people earning less than eighty percent of AMI. So we're actually exceeding, um, the goal in that area compared to the long-term goal for our neighboring communities. Um, but where we, um, fall behind is in that eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI number, where we only have six percent, um, as Christine mentioned. Um, one interesting thing to note is just that it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, um, the previous slide, just because Winuski has such a larger, a much larger share of rental house, rental stock in our overall housing to begin with. So, um, about sixty percent of our housing stock is, are rentals currently. Whereas you'll see in South Burlington, um, it's under forty percent. So, um, we are, our share of housing is already, um, we have a, a larger percentage of renters. So, um, the goals that the Housing Commission presented to us, um, and that we are working on using as a framework as we develop, um, the municipal plan, we'd like to maintain the current level of subsidized housing units in the city. Um, we're going to look at ways to, um, improve the existing housing stock and, um, rehabilitate the subsidized housing that we already have being utilized in the city. Um, and then we're really going to focus on ways to encourage new construction of housing that would target the eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI, um, group, so that we can expand options for our moderate-income renters and create, um, more fluidity throughout the housing options throughout the city. Um, and we'd like to expand and balance the available rental stock so that we can encourage economic integration, um, both in individual neighborhoods and across the city as a whole.
Okay, and not that way. The next steps that we have ahead of us, I've kind of laid out for you for Planning Commission and for Housing Commission. Um, the Planning Commission is being charged with considering, um, a parking requirement reduction bonus as an incentive, uh, for new affordable units within the Gateway District. Um, as we're developing impact fees for the city, it's possible to do a reduction in impact fees as an incentive, incentive for affordable housing within what we're trying to target. Um, we are, should be looking at considering minimum housing quality standards as part of the municipal plan, uh, ensuring that the municipal plan encourages economic integration of housing in Winuski. And we're also charging the Planning Commission with defining metrics and a schedule for evaluating effectiveness of meeting targets. So what does success look like if we're actually effectively doing, incentivizing that eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI? For the Housing Commission, uh, we're going to step into the next stage of reviewing affordable housing data for homeownership in Winuski. Um, evaluate home affordability and level of economic integration by neighborhood block group, identify gaps in existing housing stock, recommend housing goals and targets for homeownership. And once we have all of that compiled in combination with our rental targets, we'll look at making recommendations for uses of the Home Improvement Loan Fund based on both of those sets of goals. And we are happy to take questions.
Okay, um, I think, so first of all, um, thank you to those two bodies for a tremendous amount of work and the amount of, uh, work that was done in really short order. Uh, this is a project that, um, we probably, from a timing perspective, didn't structure and handle as, as well as we would have liked to, um, on the upfront. Um, and so on the back end, we were pretty demanding as a group to say, we would really love to see some recommendations come out of this in short order and appreciate the time and thought, um, that went into it and appreciate the comprehensiveness and clearly, you know, fact-based, data-driven approach that was used, um, to try to draw some conclusions to support or not support, um, use some of the proposals from a policy lever standpoint that were put before us. So just, you know, backing up, the question for this body has consistently been, um, you know, an item that comes back to us on survey after survey is the appreciation of the composition of our community. Um, the diversity that we support, the, and diversity doesn't just mean, uh, people that look different or eat different food. It's people who have different socioeconomic, um, situations and conditions. Um, and, and people who have varied employment and people who are, are different and diverse on a number of different levels. And housing is one of the key ways that you support that type of diversity in a community. So we were handed a report that included what I would say are pretty standardized, uh, mechanisms and policy mechanisms to consider for potentially, uh, increasing or sustaining the amount of affordable housing that exists in Winuski, um, in addition to setting up a commission, in addition to setting up monitoring tools. Um, so, you know, part of the big push of this conversation has been, okay, um, number one, what are our goals? Uh, prior to starting to yank on policy levers, we should understand what it is we're trying to achieve before we just start pulling threads and seeing what happens and having to react to that. That's not responsible, right? Um, and so, you know, that was sort of step one, too, in charge with this group is, what do potential targets look like? Um, and what do ranges, how can we put some context in the type of ranges we might be striving towards? And then two, what's the right potion, the right concoction of policies that then result in helping us get there? Um, so, uh, I think you've got some, you know, Planning Commission, Housing Commission next steps. You know, what I'm thinking is too, it's, this is the opportunity of council to hear that, listen to that, um, ensure that we feel like it aligns with the vision, um, that we've been working and striving towards. Um, and it's your opportunity to nudge that as well, so in terms from a feedback perspective.
Sound right?
Have you had the opportunity to, um, speak with any of the project, project people that are currently going on throughout the city? To find out if going towards that particular group that, that you specified here would be more incentivized for them to go for that extra level of, of the building as opposed to what we were trying to do before, which was for the, uh...
It actually is the same level. It was eighty to, yeah, it was eighty to one-twenty, and that's mostly what people are developing at this point. I think one of the, and I'll talk about this a little bit in the housing update. Um, one of the, um, shortfalls of, I think, that incentive is that it's not well-understood in the community. So people don't know what that range is. So they just go for it and get it through the, um, energy efficiency. Um, but they're eligible for it through the affordability that they're creating. So at three forty-eight, they would have been eligible through, um, the level of rent that they're charging. At three twenty-five, they would have been eligible through the rent that they're charging. At three ninety-four on Main Street, they would have been eligible with the rent that they're charging. They just, I think maybe, uh, developing some materials and making sure that we're putting that out into, into the community a little bit better and promoting it, um, would help.
Does the policy need some clarity to it, or is it just? Does the policy need some clarity to it or is it just not being interpreted properly?
I think people are looking at the energy efficiency, and this is just my guess, but I think they're looking at the energy efficiency and planning on meeting it anyway and feeling like, you know, that's an easier trigger to pull. But I think that, you know, they're not understanding that you're also already meeting this criteria. And so having those numbers a little more widely available for people will make them understand, hey, we're eligible this way too.
Thank you.
And if I can add to that, I think that, you know, going through this process and really understanding the data and having the community come out strongly behind targets and goals will help ease that communication, will help tell our development community, this is what we would like to see you respond to, so that then they'll be triggered to pay attention to some of those incentives as well. I think we're seeing that, quite frankly, on the ground. I think we have developers who are very conscientiously looking to develop properties in that, with a mixture of housing options within them or on comparable sites. So I think we are starting to see that. But the more we can kind of unify ourselves and the community of what we're, what we're working towards, the easier it will be for developers to help us attain those goals.
You're saying that, you're saying that they're already fulfilling?
A lot of what has been coming in recently is already within the price range of 80 to 120% area median income.
And that's what we're trying to incentivize.
That is what we're trying to incentivize. So I think that...
So do we need to make one or both of those things more harder to achieve? If people are meeting minimum, like CB's code for the, for the energy efficiency and then also meeting the affordability requirements without trying to? And we're incentivizing that. Shouldn't we incentivize something that actually, like they have to stretch to do something a little bit more if they're just, if it's the minimum requirement for them anyway?
I think that's... That is a discussion for Planning Commission to have at this point because they do have that target now. I think that's something that they should definitely be discussing and I think will, it will come up. Paul Drayer and I have discussed a little bit best ways of incentivizing and whether it's pitting energy efficiency versus affordability. That may not be our best way of going about it. And actually reducing that, the amount that people have to pay in parking may be a much better way of incentivizing by having more money available to create more units. But I certainly think the Planning Commission should be considering all of that.
Okay, thanks.
I have some questions. And I'm sorry, I'm really not feeling too hot, so bear with me. The, the, the data that you shared on affordability, does that come from the survey that was completed by landlords? Or does that come from the rental registry program?
The landlord survey was the rental registry program. So we sent out a letter with the landlord rental registry and they voluntarily sent back information.
Right. And so that's the one where a third of landlords did not respond.
That's correct.
Correct. So the, the data on pricing is reliant on a voluntary survey, a third of which we, we don't know. But I thought, Christine, that you had a statement that I missed. The third did not report, but we know that 50% is restricted. And you drew a conclusion and I missed it.
Oh, the conclusion was just that we know that unreported units are not income-restricted because that would be documented.
Right.
And we know based on the total number of units that 54% of them are currently either through projects or vouchers, income-restricted. So that what remains has to be market-to-market plus. We don't know the exact amounts in there.
And so like the 84%, that's, that's based on, you know...
70% reporting. It's based on 70% reporting.
And of the group that didn't report, it seems to me that there's some conclusions drawn that in the absence of that third, that could have a pretty significant impact on the conclusions. So I'm just wondering, you know, how, whether that factor was discussed at length and what your, what your view is on the validity of this, these benchmarks, current benchmarks as a metric for us to be relying on.
Certainly, I think, if I may, I think that because of some of the ones that we know didn't report, that would bump up what that median price is. But I don't believe that it would bump it up in a huge way because we know that River Run is 72 units. We know, I mean, River Run is 56 units. We know that River House is 72 units. So we can put together what those are. Wenouski Block is another one of the ones that didn't report and those are actually priced at around 800 per month. So that, those are below in the 80 to 120 range or possibly lower than that. We know that we have 70% of our overall market, 313 total units didn't report. So we're guessing that a 70, a 70% report rate probably is fairly representative of the market as a whole because only about, let's see, 72 units, 56 units. Mill House falls within the affordable range. It does not fall in the luxury range. So we can make some hypotheses about that. You know, there's some educated guesses going on with that. But I don't believe that it would bump up that median in a huge way. And we had to really, what we were trying to do with this is use real data that we actually had to the best of our ability. So it's not perfect data.
Yeah, and I appreciate the, the effort that went into getting real information from, from landlords. It occurred to me when I saw some of the, in the list, which are pretty substantial units, that they would fall in the 80 to 120 range. Concentrated poverty was raised as a concern. Did the commission look at where the subsidized housing units are located in the city?
We did.
And whether there's a concentration of subsidized housing in certain parts of the city versus not?
This is a look at where the higher concentrations of poverty are. We also looked at the gentrification report. So that was one of the things that we reviewed pretty early on, which gives some of that data. But in terms of, this is where the subsidized housing is distributed.
The green?
Yep. Larger circles indicate 50 or more units.
And so when I think about the, as I'm reading the recommendation or hearing the recommendation, it seems to be that the development in the city, which is largely going to be occurring in the gateways, that that be targeted toward middle-income renters. And I just wonder whether there's a risk of ensuring pockets of subsidized housing in certain parts of the city and that the expansion of housing opportunities isn't available to all income levels. Is that discussed?
It was discussed. We had, we went through a mapping exercise where I did actually map the single-family homes as well, just so we could do an overlay. But I think that as part of this next analysis, I'm going to be doing a pretty detailed analysis of which neighbor, like block group by block group, which neighborhoods are economically integrated or closer. I would say that the city as a whole isn't very economically integrated because we're primarily a low-income community. So we're not, you know, when you look at some of the strategies that are used by scholars and researchers and looking at economic integration, it's about a balance between low-income, moderate income, and high income, you know, to a lesser or greater extent. So I don't know that we'll find overall tremendous areas of economic integration. Based on what I've looked at thus far, the place that's most economically integrated is our downtown.
I have a couple of questions. I'd like to let other people talk for a minute, gather my thoughts.
I'll just add that on this map, I, there's, because the 50 units or more leave some gaps. You know, like for example, on Main Street, I mean, we know that there's no fewer than three different. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rental registry by affordability piece. I feel like that's a more accurate, I mean, from a concentration standpoint, it's a good. But for us, I think, you know, 10, 5, 3, I mean, those are all actually significant counts when you start to talk about, like you said, the block analysis.
Yep.
Could you talk a little bit about some of the policies that didn't come forward? And what was taken off the table during conversations?
I don't, I don't know that we took, did we take anything off the table and... We did, we were looking at the, like the unit size and that level of, of the housing stock, but we decided not to get into that as it's not, it doesn't seem like a crucial issue, like hitting a, a point there anyway. And it's also not a priority issue at this point. That's the only thing that's coming to mind for me offhand.
Do you mean from the Wenouski Housing Needs Assessment? I don't think that we've taken anything off the table at this juncture. I think we've come up, the Housing Commission has recommended goals to the Planning Commission for their consideration as far as the policy piece. Are you, are you thinking of a specific thing we discussed in Housing Commission where we took something off the table?
No, I think it was just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, I think part of the, part of this exercise is to make sure that we air it out, consider everything that's on the table. And if there's something we're not going to do, let's say that we're not going to do it and then move on from that. And so I think from, from this body's perspective, it's important to understand that if they're accepting recommendations that inherently disable or deter from some of those future policy considerations that we've talked about.
No, I don't think we took anything off the table.
Okay. The other thing that I, I, I feel a little bit strongly on point one and two on the Wenouski rental housing goals. That's interesting is the, the word subsidized is used versus affordable. And I'm curious as to the thinking behind adopting subsidized there versus using affordable and whether or not it's...
Yeah, I, I think that one of the things we were looking at is because we use subsidized pretty specifically there. That was because, one of the concerns we were looking at is something that we've discussed here at City Council pretty repeatedly, and that is the fear that people will be pushed out of our market. And we've discussed it in terms of the lowest-income, most vulnerable people being pushed out of Wenouski. And when a certain amount of the housing, 36% by project, is specified to be for that lowest-income, most vulnerable, vulnerable population, then all of a sudden it pushes the place where people will be pushed out of the community to that place where the gap is. So our concern as a housing commission was that the people who will actually be pushed out of this community if we don't create new housing for them is the people who are right at 80%. The people 80 to 85% AMI are actually the people who will not be able to find a place in Wenouski. And so you're looking at people who are pretty common in our market and who are working as paraprofessionals up at UVM, who are new teachers, who are nurses. You know, those are the people who will not be able to find a place in Wenouski. So our concern was making sure that they had a place as well.
All the questions? Just a quick one on this. Did Firehouse data or anything tell us that subsidized housing specifically needs rehabilitation? Or are we just kind of assuming?
We, we discussed that. I think that that was a concern that was raised by one of the board members of Wenouski Housing Authority. And I think anecdotally, there is some evidence that that may be some, some of the older aging housing stock and may need some attention. So I think that's just anecdotal at this point in time. And we'll talk a little bit more about Firehouse in the Housing Update. But we will use data to kind of drive where we're putting those funds.
I do appreciate the point on number one of the rental housing goals of maintaining stock of subsidized units. I do think, you know, that concern was couched in a lot of previous discussion we had about the effects of gentrification in the community. And I think if we're looking at that vulnerable population of residents, increased cost of living within the community as a result of changing housing stock is also something to be concerned of and something we'd have to, you know, it'd be different discussions that are outside of just stock discussions. But I do appreciate prioritizing that goal to ensure that those aren't members of our community that are getting pushed out. I did have a question about, it seems like there was a lot of discussion at the commission about economic integration. Was their discussion, or in that discussion, was there anything about not just ensuring that we're creating economic integration with where units are in the city, but economic integration within units for specific dwellings within those units? And if there are ways that the city can incentivize that, if that is something that is desirable to achieve?
So mixed income developments is what, yeah. We didn't specifically get into that. I think one of the reasons that we were really looking at economic integration in the city is based on the outcome of the Economic Development Strategic Plan as well as the Marketing and Branding Initiative. The, the quality of schools is repeatedly raised as an issue for why people move out of, young families move out of the community. And so trying to address housing in combination with schools is really what we were looking at with that. I certainly think we're open to looking at ways to incentivize mixed, mixed income developments.
Yeah, I think it's taking that, that principle or that value in, kind of extrapolating.
Yeah, putting it right in one building. Yeah, absolutely.
To move in that direction.
Yeah. And we, and we do have some new developments, you know, being proposed at this point that do follow that model.
Okay, great.
This was specifically a look at rental housing.
Correct.
Did the conversation of affordable, single-family homes start to come up through any of this?
It did. We decided to really try to focus on rentals at this point just because of the rapidity with which development is happening. But that is the next thing that we'll look at and then we'll pull that all together to report back on the whole.
So there are not specific targets that are being recommended here, correct?
That's correct.
So I guess I have a couple points about sort of framing and messaging this whole conversation. I'm a little challenged sometimes when we compare ourselves to other communities within Chittingen County. We aren't like other communities in Chittingen County. And that's actually, I think for many people, a source of pride in that one of the reasons, I think Seth alluded to earlier, we celebrate our diversity and that comes from a number of different reasons. But one is that we're very affordable and that ought to be celebrated. That didn't come through as much in this presentation. It came across as though we were somehow out of line. So I just want to caution future presentations from making it look like perhaps we're on an extreme in a way that's not something that should be really elevated and suppressed.
We're outperforming is what we are.
The language says outperforming, which I appreciate. But some of the charts and graphs are, could lead people to draw a different conclusion. And I'm also, when I look at the target, the targets in South Burlington and Williston, again, and as was made clear, our housing mix is totally different from those communities. So it's difficult to even compare. Is the reason they were selected because they happen to be two communities that have set targets?
Yes.
Has Burlington set targets?
I wasn't able to find them in, like, these were set in a very similar format. And so kind of we were using this as a precedent to look at how we might go about doing it. But I definitely appreciate what you're saying with that. I can look at other ones and pull other ones in or we can pull this way of looking at it out. I think this was really meant to be a way to frame the conversation with the Housing Commission from the beginning so that we had something we were working toward and a clarity of understanding of what we were trying to do.
Actually, they, they tend to update regions of the city and do focuses on specific regions.
By their wards or whatever.
Correct. And so the most recent, the most recent one that was issued there that I'm aware of was the Downtown Core, which hadn't been updated in five years. And they actually did out, getting somebody to come in and do specific areas or regions of the cities.
So, I mean, Chittingen County is like the least affordable place to live in Vermont and probably one of the least affordable places to live in New England. So it's challenging for me to use the county as a benchmark because, and I understand there are good reasons to do that. And I also think there are other communities in Vermont that may look more like us or other parts of the country, as Eric discovered, that would be more useful to help me understand, given... Given who we are and who we've said we want to continue to be.
Yeah.
Looking at communities like South Burlington and Williston doesn't, doesn't click for me. Um, so that's just commentary. The, the piece I'm really interested in is, these numbers have to add up to a hundred, these percentages. Right? As a math problem. We have, you know, eighty-four percent now, according to the best information we have. Um, is the recommendation to reduce that number and increase the eighty to a hundred and twenty? And if so, by what amount? Or is that, I didn't see where we get into those numbers in either of the process or, or the recommendations.
Well, number one, there's no reduction of housing because we're not getting rid, rid of any housing.
Right.
Um, there's an addition of new housing that is in the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. So that would change the percentages.
Yeah.
Um, but it depends on how much housing is created.
Right.
So one of the reasons that we didn't get into very specific, this number of units or this percent is because with especially what's going on in our gateways, we have no way of predicting how many of those properties are going to be redeveloped or how, you know, what the total is going to be. So if we were to say a total number of units, it, we can't, we can't gauge our success like that when we have no control over what's actually developed. So, um, we use this as a starting point, but definitely it's not losing the lowest income units.
Well, not the, not the.
It's changing, it's, it's shifting the percentages, yes.
But, and, and it, it is the case that, um, you know, it's not like we have new land to develop.
Right.
So housing units are going to be replaced. So there, there could be a reduction in the number of, um, affordable, if you're using those three tiers,
Yeah.
Um, units, not just percentages.
Well, I, I would just say to that, the, just from the zoning philosophy perspective of what we were trying to create was in addition to create, I mean, it's not just creating density, it's creating good dense land use and best use of property and land. So while true, I think the idea has always been you, you could displace units. And, you know, that's a conversation from a policy perspective, that that's a tool that you can use, that when affordable units are displaced, you've got to replace them. Um, but the idea has always been the single-family home that's been chopped up and is probably three units can become a twenty-four unit property. And that was the idea of that. So I think the concept for this to me has always been, there's the baseline of what exists. What do we want to do with policy to try to drive what happens to the net new unit creation? What, what numbers should we be aiming for in terms of how the creation of new ones look? You know, so I think, uh, try to make it constructive is like the baseline affordability, you know, subsidized units. If there's a recommendation not to pursue, um, you know, policies that are going to significantly increase those, which I would also add, does not mean it doesn't necessarily mean you couldn't net increase them. You could also set a companion policy that says the city will engage in, you know, one-off subsidized unit, like we're doing quite frankly right now on two different projects, right? Where we are talking about creating net new subsidized units. It's about those net new ones versus the conversion and replacement of those, of those humans. Cause this has always been about, the zoning philosophy's always been about adding people and adding density and using the, the property that, that.
Right, but I guess what, what, what people, you know, what, what's the composition of the community going to look like five, ten years from now as upward pressures increase, cost?
Well, and that is the biggest highlight for me on the Planning Commission's Goal Five under Next Steps is defining the metrics and scheduling, uh, for evaluating effectiveness and meeting targets. I feel really strongly it does need to include not just new unit development. Um, you know, especially if we have a focus on new unit development and the majority of that unit development that we're encouraging is in the eighty to tw- one hundred and twenty AMA. And our focus is on evaluating percentage of new unit development, where on the spectrum that falls. And we're missing those units that are redeveloped that, you know, as a market has proven. And, um, owners find that, that there's a, an attractive market to redevelop and change what their housing, existing housing stock was, what that turnover looks like for our overall housing stock. I think it's really important and the takeaways I got from the initial, the data comparing us to other cities is not that we should use that as a benchmark for where Winuski should be. I think that's a community vision we all come by. Um, and it actually gave me the other impression, there is such a low percentage of affordable housing available in neighborhood communities. If that stock dwindles, um, then there aren't places for people who are displaced to go. And by affordable, I don't just mean subsidized units, I mean including that up to eighty percent AMA.
Yeah.
The hard part about the up to eighty is that there's a gap between subsidized. This is, and, and then you get into small versus capital A affordable units. There's, there are not policy mechanics that easily impact how that inventory is managed and how those rents increase or decrease. Um, you know, short of, you know, doing what large cities have to do, which is, you know, they, they mandate rents, right? They do rent control. The, the way that we actively participate traditionally from a housing policy level standpoint, the way you most actively participate in that range is by trying to influence inventory, by managing what new stuff is coming online and trying to provide programs that support the continued affordability of those programs. And by that you mean, you, you try to find opportunities for people to maintain those homes in a way that's affordable. Be it a loan program or grant investments that help people do those improvements without having to take on additional debt that results in an increase in debt service and increase the tenants. So I think it, that's what gets back to this conversation around inventory and, and what new units are coming on. So when the goals come back, it's good to have, you know, we want to find tools to, to re, you know, to maintain what's there as a, as a cornerstone. But what's not right now in those rental housing goals, to be really clear, is, you know, is the large-scale pursuit of policy that results in new subsidized, you know, units that tend to be subsidized or deeply subsidized, um, right now. And I think that's something we just need to be very transparent about. Um, and understand as you accept this document moving forward, that then that's, that's then what we're asking from a policy level standpoint.
Can you restate that? I mean.
I'm pointing out what's not on the rental housing goals. And it's what, what, what we're being told is maintain and focus, focus policies on new unit creation around this eighty to one twenty AMA.
Right.
That's just, that's really important because what's, what again is not said there is we're, we're also saying we are not going to, we're not going to make that a primary focus. Like I said, doesn't mean we can't have a one-off policy where we, we give as a performance piece to the city manager that, you know, we engage in at least one active conversation around a specific property, offering, you know, additional subsidized housing opportunities. But we are leaving that out, um, under those housing goals right now. And it's just something we need to be comfortable with and understand and.
So what we're, just to restate that, what this document says, and I'm still not clear what role we have in approving or accepting or whatever, giving feedback, um, is that this calls out subsidized housing units, which is not the same as units, um, available to the less than eighty percent AMA population. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So, um, it appears to, um, the document appears to privilege the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent population over folks who don't, who are not eligible for subsidized housing, but who are below eighty percent AMA.
That was my takeaway.
And that seems to be the prioritization of this document. And, and I would say that I think that's not consistent necessarily with some of the statements we've made in our vision statement, which talk about an affordable, livable, diverse community.
Eighty percent AMA is the, the tipping point for being considered low-income and eligible for most of the subsidized housing in the city.
Right, but we don't have, but we have more housing units that serve the less than eighty percent population than are subsidized, considered subsidized houses.
Yes, correct.
And so I think one of the, um, priorities, at least that I've tried to articulate, is maintaining the level of affordable housing. And if we're defining affordable, I'm not sure how we're defining affordable because it was a surprise to me to find out that our affordable housing incentive program and form-based code is actually the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent category. That's news to me. Um, and protect, perhaps it was conveyed, it just wasn't contextualized the way it is so nicely now. I, I understand it. Um, but, um, that, that's a big shift, I think, from what we've talked about. And so I thank you for calling that out. I'm interested in what others think about that. And I'm also interested in what role we play in, in the continued pursuit of some of these goals or whether these goals can be refined.
So we're, so eighty percent of AMA is fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Do we know what percentage of, do we know what income level subsidies cap off at? So essentially if X percent of our stock is affordable, so we're saying below that eighty percent of AMA, we're using that definition of small A affordability. What percentage of our housing stock exists between subsidized housing and that cap on what we're calling affordable?
So to the, to the best of our ability, um, let's see, it's this one. Yeah, that's the slide that shows you. So six hundred and eighty-seven units are subsidized units. And then you've got the additional three hundred and seventy-nine that are market units that are below, that are affordable to below eighty percent AMA.
So I guess that does seem, that's the paradigm shift that Counselor Mace was just referring to. And being confused about the, what we're defining as affordability seems like the term we've been using, um, market rate in the past. So that's what's confused me. It seems like those, in this discussion, those terms are interchangeable. Whereas in the past, I think the discussion was that there was a difference between what we're considering affordable and what we're considering market rate.
That, that's a tricky C to wade into because they all mean different things and they're defined by, they're defined differently for different reasons. Um, and to go back to your original question is, there's no simple answer to draw an income limit based, based on what's, we would consider subsidized. Because subsidies can mean different things, depending on the type of subsidy, where it's coming from, um, what the benchmark is. Uh, different programs have different AMA cutoffs, for example. Um, and so that, that just gets really complicated. Um, you know, going back to the, I, I mean, I don't know if this is helpful, but there are, I mean, you can do deeply subsidized versus subsidized versus affordable units. I mean, there's different tier breakdowns from a data perspective that you could get very specific into. Cause it's almost sounds like you're kind of curious as to what, like, it sounds like you want to understand if there's a further breakdown of that number of, of the blue.
There is.
Yes.
No, no, not as much.
I'm less interested in the blue because I think they're a known entity, they're a known quantity. What I'm, I want to make sure that I'm, um, interpreting this the right way. And that is that those three hundred and seventy-nine units that are not subsidized, but are currently affordable for folks who are below eighty percent, may not, you know, we, the policy goal appears to be, we'll maintain the six hundred and eighty-seven. But if those three hundred and seventy-nine units are replaced by units that serve primarily eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, not only is that okay, but that's a goal of ours.
I see.
And I, and I have a problem with that.
And, and we're saying out of this, where we want to, where we want our policy levers to incentivize growth is the orange bar that's above what we're considering affordable. So in that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, which is not what as a city we're defining as affordable. Um, which I do find really interesting too, because if we look back, you know, we always like to look back to that strategic vision statement where we have quality affordable housing right in, identifying what our strategic vision of what we want to encourage in the city.
So I could speak to that a little bit. So you're saying here that eighty-four percent of these units are, are affordable below eighty percent? But we also know that seventy-two percent of the population is making eighty percent or less. So we already have twelve percent that we could shift up to open up more to people making eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. And.
But I don't know that we, I, I believe that we weren't intending to shift existing units.
Correct.
We were talking about new development.
Expanding that, so there are more units available to people who are making eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. And that's not just about new people moving in, that's also about people that are currently low-income trying to move themselves up and having housing available to them. You know, if somebody becomes disqualified for subsidy, where are they going to go and to be able to stay in this community?
Right, I appreciate that. And I think you could tweak the language to make clear that we're not just talking about maintaining subsidized units. We're main, we're talking about maintaining, um, the current level of, uh, affordable. And affordable is now going to be defined as.
What, what I would say, so this is, this is a very light critique, so take it that way.
Yeah.
What I think is, some of the slides are inherently defensive of some of the data that's there. Like this is trying, I understand what this is trying to do, but I can also understand why there was a cross using there. If it's more proactively showing the, the piece that we want to see grow.
Yeah.
Um, that's a way of, I, I think capturing that is just from a, cause to me this is, this is making the point of, hey, this is why we came to this conclusion, right?
Yeah.
Um, versus proactively, there's a way that you could, I can take it flipping this around in a way that visually says, okay, now I see what we're, what we're trying to expand.
Yeah, yeah.
In, in just a different way. But the policy doesn't, you know, what the target is doesn't change. And I think that's the important piece for this conversation here, in the acknowledgement of that.
And I think that, so I, I definitely understand that where the recommendation at looking at moving forward is not to change what our housing stock currently is. It is to incentivize a specific type of housing stock in newly developed housing. Um, if that is the direction that the city goes in and the, the focus is on the eighty to one twenty, what's really important to me is, so whether or not that's changing existing housing stock, what it is, is changing the composition of our city as a whole when we look at it in broad context. And we need to be able to look back frequently, and that goes back to that agenda and those metrics to say, where are we? Okay, did we go too far? Did we hit this plus? And now we need to make sure to change our policy levers so we're incentivizing
Yes.
to continue to build in that under eighty percent? Um, and I do think it is really critical that we keep up pace with incentivizing the addition of new affordable housing as well. So I appreciate Seth you saying there might be other levers alongside what we're doing to incentivize new growth to make sure we're engaging in those discussions as, as a city. So that we're not only building out exclusively within a, a certain, um, type of stock. And then because of the stock that we have, we're so small. And, you know, a few, a one hundred unit that comes online changes our percentages pretty significantly because we have such a low amount of housing stock. And that can really change the face of our community so quickly.
Um, I'm just going to briefly add from the Planning Commission's perspective when we are presented, um, with these goals. Point four, Heather, I don't know if you want to go to that page, um, of the housing goals, um, the expand and balance the available rental stock and encourage economic integration of neighborhoods and the city as a whole. Um, I read that as we need to be thinking across the spectrum and we need to be putting in specific, uh, adjusting the policy levers so that we're getting that full spectrum. So I, I do think that there was, there is a conversation specifically about our lack of rental stock in the eighty to one twenty range. But I think at least when the Housing Commission presented this to us. this to us, um, we saw that as a shortfall, but not the entire picture or the point of the presentation. That's one of the points. But I think point four here is really the biggest point, which is that we have to develop our recommendations based on looking at the spectrum as a whole and having a more fluid distribution of rental prices so that people have the ability to move, and that we're not like polarized on the low end and the high end, and that anyone who is living in our community, who might be, increase their income or want to improve their living situation, has nowhere to go but away. So we're, we want to look at the whole spectrum. And I think that that's, you know, stated in that goal.
But I do think to that point, the vulnerability for people who increase their income that would need to look for stock elsewhere would not be people that are increasing from the level of subsidy to non-subsidized. Because if we have eighty percent below the AMA, but seventy-two percent of the population within that, there's enough stock below the AMA for people who are moving out of subsidy into still being underneath that eighty percent. I keep saying AMA, but I mean AMI. But it'd be people who move from eighty percent AMI to eighty-one percent AMI. Is, that's the, am I correct? Is that the data?
That was the concern that we had.
So if I can step us back just a second, um, out of kind of the messaging and tone and some of these details, I think one of the framing that we have done certainly on the staff level is talking about, and forgive me for my, I'm gonna try and channel Paul Drayer, which is a really bad idea. But that afford, that affordable means for our community, can mean for our community, affordable for all of our residents. And that looks different across income levels. And one of the ways we stay in affordable community is to have some of the higher-end development so we can keep our tax rates low and have, have other housing stocks be more affordable. So to just think about affordable, I'm using that term as generally as I can, to only think about that as a certain income level or housing stock and below, I think misses the opportunity to think about our workforce housing and our middle-income housing and our young family housing. And again, to Palace's point, kind of creating that, that spectrum of options that allow people to move here in graduate school or out of college or as a young, um, working person and stay here through having children and having a family and having some options. And so I think we need to think about, for, at least for a staff, when we think about diversity and affordability, it's across that life cycle and across that experience in our community, and not just for a stagnant income level or a stagnant population. And I think we've kind of got off, off a little into the weeds of the data, because it's a very data-heavy presentation. And I just want to remind us of that, kind of larger context of how we create affordability at all income levels.
Well, so let's also get us focused on what outcomes these guys need from us tonight in terms of feedback. And, and I mean, to that point of, okay, what's the goal? What are we trying to achieve? We have before us the four rental housing goals. What we don't have are those numbers, right? These are general, general policy directions. And I think that's a question as to whether, you, you know, you've got in here under the Housing Commission, recommended housing goals and targets for homeownership, whether or not you see a future of applying a, coming back with a particular percentage and saying, we think fifty percent of net new units should be, we should be trying to influence the market to give us this. And we think this percentage should be this. And maybe i- is that, is that somewhere you think down the line? Or is that not a productive way of approaching it in your minds?
So I think ultimately that is a council prerogative. You are the policy setters, you, you are the one, you know, the, your policy extension boards can do that work and present options to you. But I think ultimately it's your call whether you want to ta- task us with setting finite targets and bringing those back to you for recommendations. I do think that, you know, we've talked about this a little bit in the past, about this work rolling into the master planning work. So certainly, we're going to, if we decide to, well, we will go in that direction. But if we decide to let that public process play out with these goals, um, those are, those are targets, numbers, values our community can vet over the next couple of months with the housing, with the master planning process. But it's really your prerogative, how specific do you want us to get? Are you comfortable with these? Do you want to send, give us back direction to get more specific? You are, you are the policy setters.
So in terms of maintain current level subsidized housing units, you know, that, I think that's pretty clear. Rehabilitate existing subsidized units. We've talked a lot about the different types of loan programs and/or partnerships that can take place to help with some of those activities. I think it's, once you get down to encourage construction of eighty to one twenty AMI is, is where we need to talk about our expectations as to what that benchmark looks like and what success looks like. And whether we want a number recommended to us, I mean, I don't think it's productive this body, this evening to try to come up with a number and throw it out of thin air. And then expand the balance of available rental stock and encourage economic integration, you know, as a whole. I, I think what would be really helpful is to, to take a step back and talk about, okay, these are our goals. What, underneath this are the bullet points of what are those different policy options then that come as a result? What's, what do the potential ingredients look like from that? Does that, does, again, I'm trying to get this to some productive outcomes for these guys, as I said at the table today, of what the expectations are coming back. And I, I do think that when the rubber meets the road, we need, we need to have something to measure number three by. You know, we can say, you know, net new units, we want to see, you know, a X percentage, Y percentage, C percentage. What, it's not okay in my mind to do is to say, we want to increase them. Okay, one new unit gets incre- gets built and we'll call that a success. That's, that's kind of cowardly planning. I don't think it's, it's a bad thing for us to take a shot at something and, and be afraid to reach for it.
How do we do that based on the, the proposed properties that could be going through the same process?
Could be a percentage of new units. That's something we discussed when we did the presentation to Planning Commission. Rather than coming up with a specific number of units, but saying we'd like it to be, success would be this percent of new units are between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent.
From a regional, a regional housing goal perspective, that's exactly what was done, right? So from, you know, building better homes. Anyway, there's a regional effort around affordable housing right now, where the goals were, we want to see this many net new units created, and we want this percentage to be serving this population, or this socioeconomic demographic. It's important not to just help people, but-
So I, I appreciate that. And I think that would be really helpful for me is to see what is the recommendation that emerges. Because if we're framing it without percentage of, what do we want to use our policies for? What percentage of new units coming on do we try to aim for with these policies? Just having that goal of, we want to encourage, the impression that I got left with is that we want to put all our eggs in the basket of as much, every single unit we want to try to get online, being in that eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. And so I think having a percentage breakdown of, what do we want the goal for new units to be, not only tells us, what's the recommendation for percentage of new units that are eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI, but by virtue, what is the percentage of new units we are encouraging, we want to hit being subsidized? And what's the percentage we want that's below eighty percent AMI that's not subsidized?
Right, right. And I'd like to see it pull out. First, first of all, I'm not sure where we landed on the use of subsidized versus affordable.
I think we heard that they felt like it was very intentional, and there was a reasoning behind it.
Right. And so what's our response to that?
I think that the, my response to that was to say that number three is typically the way that that's achieved or pursued, or the eighty percent is by trying to induce the market to build additional units in that. It's not about retention as much.
Well, I think for terminology's sake, so subsidized is specifically whether or not through one program or another, that people, their, that rent is being subsidized, as opposed to affordable, just meaning above subsidy, below eighty percent of average median income.
Right.
The thirty percent threshold of what's affordable for the area, what's the average person capable of paying? How it's calculated doesn't matter. But the, but the idea being, what this is saying is eighty, one twenty. You could say, I want to see some percentage two at eighty to sixty. You know, you could, you could make, you could also ask for that and ask if they, I, I think the more appropriate way, given the amount of work and thought gone into this, is to ask them to look at that to see if setting a, you know, a side-by-side layered policy that specifies between those two different AMIs from a goal perspective makes sense.
Well, I think we're also making a decision of what our, yeah, what our goals as a city are. And then what are the policy levers to accomplish those goals?
So I'm hearing that people want numbers.
Yep.
And targets.
Yep.
What percent of new units were, as opposed to specific numbers, just because we don't know how many properties are going to develop?
Well, so I would say yes. If we're looking at, how do we want to use our policy to encourage growth in specific areas, and what percentage of that growth do we want to be X, Y, or Z?
Right.
Then looking at new units, which is what we have control over, is important. I, it's really important to me that we couple that with a feedback mechanism for when we analyze what our overall stock, including existing stock turnover, et cetera, might be, so that we can reevaluate those policy mechanisms.
And that's embedded in the gentrification tool that Heather's designed from a policy take. So I think that that's just a reinforcement of the importance of that.
Yep.
And kind of gives also direction on a really targeted focus, maybe in the future of that data to say, we got to make sure we're looking at that.
Yeah.
And I think, well, I think to that point, I, I think it's also, given the importance placed on that, I think it's important to, to hear if there was any thought given in regards to weighing the policy around, you, you take your place. And whether or not that's something, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we haven't, we haven't looked at policy at all.
Policies, right.
Policy goes back to Planning Commission.
Yep.
So policy has not, I mean, certainly we've discussed, you know, you saw in the recommendations, there are a couple of policies that are called out as the next steps. But that's certainly not the whole range of policy that can be considered. So we're handing it back and saying, this is what we think is the vision. Now look at policy.
Right.
So I would be interested to see what the recommendation comes out as, you know, what percentage of new, um, new units you would want to incentivize towards being eighty to one hundred and twenty. I would like to hear from my fellow counselors, and I don't know where folks stand. For me, it's really important that in those percentage goals of new units, that some percentage does include subsidized housing units as well. That we're not saying, no, we want to exclusively encourage only the growth of X, Y, and Z. I'm not saying that should be our focus, but that I don't want us to say, we're prioritizing building out housing that fits this range. That means for a while, Winuski's not engaging in conversations around new affordable, or new big A affordable subsidized housing units.
I, I think we're definitely, as a city, I've been in conversations about big A affordable housing. But I will say that in terms of the Winuski Housing Needs Assessment, the recommendation was that we have enough subsidized. So this, this actually follows what was said in the Winuski Housing Needs Assessment.
I, yes, in percentage of stock maybe, but if we're saying we value the profile of our community and what our community looks like from a vibrancy standpoint, then that changes if we're not also continuing to build out opportunities.
To maintain that percentage as opposed to the number.
Or to maintain, so as we're growing, we're not-
Yeah.
Yes, we want to, if we want to slant how we're growing, but we don't want to neglect growth in one specific population.
Understood.
But the goal is not to maintain the current percentages now. Like ultimately, I would prefer to see a balance in those three percent AMI, not thirty-three, 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 but not eighty-five percent, six, eighty-four, six, and ten either. I think, you know, and I think that's how I read this report originally before tonight, coming into this, I looked at it as, yes, majority of the incentivizing would go into that eighty to one hundred and twenty percent, only because that is what's needed to bring that balance somewhere a little bit more. Like Jess said, affordable for everybody. That means affordable for low-income, affordable for middle-income, affordable for higher income. And I, I get, I one-hundred percent agree that we need to be really protective of the, the affordability of stock, the subsidized stock, whatever. You can add all those words in, that stock of units right now. I think we'd be very protective of that and make sure that we don't lose it. And I, on a policy point, I would be for exploring, not, yeah, you must replace what is there. I think that's kind of, in, in my mind, how we really mindfully and like respectfully of our current mix, which again, is what makes this place so special. I think that's how we do it respectfully, but still bring these percentages kind of into each other a little bit, where, like I said, I, you know, I anecdotally hear from a lot of people around that, you know, the, one of the challenges for living and staying in, in Winuski often comes back to the school, right? Whether it's true, not true, perceived, whatever. If some people believe it, it's true in some sense of the word, right? So if bringing these, uh, these gaps in a little bit, and then allowing people to go from, you know, uh, being lower income, or just being new to living on their own, or whatever drives people to Winuski, and keeping them here so that they can go up in a level in housing stock, or buy a home. I would love if somebody could actually like buy a condo so you could like be a homeowner and have it be affordable and not have to, you know, fix a wrapper. But like, you know, like having that-
It sounded personal.
Well, no, no, but like having that progression, like that natural progression, beginning to stay here, I think is what in turn, and it looks like this report agrees with that, is what's gonna like help the school system become more solid, in that there's not as much, you know, transient out, out and back of, of Winuski, that people actually get to come here, stay here, like all the way through. Like, I'm gonna come and rent, and I'm gonna buy my first house, and then my kids are gonna go to school here, and then I'm gonna like, uh, downsize to a high-end unit down on the water. Like, you know, like you can go through this pool and then die and be floated off into Burlington or whatever, you know, down the river, like however it works. But I think that, you know, bringing that mix, bringing that middle-range mix up is really an important piece of the puzzle. So I definitely agree with all this that's said, and I appreciate the discussion around affordability, and that is in our mission and vision. And I think it's really, uh, super important. But I think having that mix is also the way that you get people from start to finish in Winuski.
I think there's another piece of the story that's missing too. If our eighty to one hundred and twenty percent housing stock is this pinched, that causes rents to go up. And so if we're bringing down these new units and we're expanding that range, it's easier, the way the market fluctuates, it's easier to keep those rates where they're at. If we're having, you know, this much of our stock as subsidized, and then there's also enough folks willing to pay for luxury units, pay those rates, then you're gonna end up with nothing in the middle and more luxury units, because that's what the market is going to be asking for. So it's, that's, this is just another point of why you want to have like a balance across all three ranges.
Okay. So I, we've got a little feedback there. I just want to quickly open up to see if there's, I, I think in terms of the housing goals, the first housing goals sheet, I think that gives enough framework to work with to start for the next conversation. It sounds like this is a dialogue, not a, not a one-stop type thing, which is good. I, I just want to open up, any concerns regarding next steps? Any comments in regards to those? Yes?
I just have a, a comment, I guess, and question about the minimum housing quality standards, or I guess a caution. I am reluctant, or to use terms like quality of life and quality, because I think that's can be pretty subjective. And we ran into this, I think, tension a little bit when we updated the ordinances a year plus ago around bedroom size. So I just want to be, or caution the Planning Commission to make sure that there's, if that's a direction you're gonna go- um, subs, if that's a direction you're going to go, that, you know, work with representatives of different, um, you know, constituencies, um, cultures, classes, you name it, to, to build a definition of what quality is.
I think it was more life safety that we were, was what we were using here, using the Firehouse software to begin with, but that's a very, very important point to consider when it comes to quality of life, right?
Yeah.
And it sounds like we're giving the Housing Commission a next step of, the Housing and Planning Commission a next step of, you know, tangible percentages of growth. If, so I would also love to add a next step of having the Housing Commission look at, um, some of those policy mechanisms we talked about before around mixed income housing. Um, and then also have the Housing Commission look into what the mayor mentioned, uh, you take it, you replace it, just in regards to redevelopment. And I, you know, I don't know, we're engaged in this discussion now around new housing stock, so I think it's okay to look at those potential policy recommendation, or at least look at you take it, you replace it, recommendations after, once we have those discussions out of the way, since that's more about redevelopment of existing. Uh, but I would really like, as we're looking at policy incentives that encourage new housing stock and what that's going to look like, does that include something around mixed income?
We've been perceiving the policy piece to be the planning commission's realm, whereas the housing is setting the broad, the Housing Commission sets the broad vision and the goals, and, and that can change if, if you feel that that would be more appropriate, but that's the way we've been approaching it thus far.
I think as long as we're looking at it, I feel, you know, wherever the appropriate home is.
Yeah, I, I think just, yeah, I think number six maybe with the planning commission is just, if there are, if there are also policy levers that are being taken off the table, I think we need to be really, really explicit about that. And that's what we're talking about, that mentioned inclusionary zoning is a common tool used to achieve what you're talking about. Yes, those policy recommendations, if there's anything being taken off by the planning commission, either because they're considering some other things right now, but they'll, they're just being backburnered and will be considered later if we can just get an understanding of how that policy analysis is going to go. Because, you know, what's good is a lot of these mix in with other issues, so it's good to see housing, you know, tenting these conversations, quite frankly. Um, that's a good thing, but there's also just some pulses that aren't listed here that we know were part of that conversation at some point. So again, if they're going to go off the paper, it's not necessarily, we're not saying it's bad or good, we want to hear what their thoughts are on it. We just want to acknowledge when we're removing something off.
Certainly.
Other questions, thoughts, feedback? We should just do one housing meeting a month.
I, I just thank you.
Yes.
Really has informed this conversation.
We appreciate all of your time and effort. Thank you both very much.
There might still be others that want.
Oh, yeah, I'll open it up, absolutely. Um, and I think we'll all go back and watch this and create a list of like what the deliverables were, because I know on the housing topic, that always becomes an issue. Probably for the public, anything else from council?
Nope, well, just, I think the work that you all are doing on the Housing and Planning Commission is so important. This is the future of Winuski. And it's, the Housing Commission's work is brand new, so I'm so glad we created that commission.
Now, open it up to the public. Comments, questions, concerns? Yes. Hello?
I don't believe that the version of the PowerPoint is online right now, because this slide is what that we updated. Great. And I would caution the council to make policy decisions without having that one of the housing second phase of the homeownership component.
To that point, ensure, you're saying ensure that homeownership's a part of that, of those goal discussions?
For that, in fact, as it acts.
Yep. Sure.
If I can just interject from it, just for the camera and those watching, Bryn's absolutely right, what's linked on your agenda isn't the full slide deck. Um, we kept some in there for reference, but if you go to the city's website, to the Housing Commission, to the folders with the documents, you'll see all of the presentations back through the course of their meetings that has a lot of data in it. So please feel, you know, members of the public should feel free to dive into that if you're interested as well.
Other questions, comments, concerns to the public? Yes, sir?
Hi, it's, uh, Tom Gans. So I had a question. Did you guys look at percent or the number of units that are permanently affordable or subject to long-term housing subsidy commitments? They would, you know, I could see that, that middle section that is currently affordable, uh, there's no way, no, if economic conditions change, that could quickly go away. And so I think that that type of data would be, maybe helpful to understand.
Yeah, the, um, well, obviously, there, there's a limited time on, and it's, it's not necessarily permanently affordable. It's usually about twenty years of affordability for the subsidized units. Um, and Seth, you may be able to jump in here and help me a little bit with that, because it's not my area of expertise, but I know thirty-six percent is what's required to be ongoing affordable units right now, but I don't know where it is in the stages, where it is, any of those are in their stage of succession potentially.
So there is a list, um, maintained by a number of entities that, um, maps out in the state where expiring affordable housing, um, units are located, and there's a coalition of funders that gets together and talks about, okay, we know this is coming up, um, what are we going to do with it? Um, I'll, I'll just be really blunt. Here's the thing with housing is the loans are actually never paid off, right? Um, so there's a lot of leveraged loans done along a deal, and then there's a refinancing of those programs and projects, um, time after time again. These, all of these projects will rely on future financing being available mostly at the federal level that will allow a new owner, in some cases, or the entity managing them, like the housing authority, to do a new loan on the project to make improvements. As soon as they make improvements on the projects, then they're subject to another round of, of not perpetuity, but a lengthening of those. Um, to that point, um, one thing I was going to tag on to the end is it's, it's probably just time to have, um, Ed come in.
Yep.
And do an update on their, um, on their project, and that would be a great thing to throw out to him, um, on whether or not Winuski has any concerns about the retention of the current subsidized units and just hear if he's got any updates on specific threats. So I think that's absolutely relevant to that question too.
Great, thank you.
So we talked, we talked back as you, was that okay for your question, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the biggest part to me are those market units that there had, it was, I think it was twenty, you know, it was seven hundred units that are considered affordable, but based on market conditions. So those, those could disappear quickly. And, um, you know, I, I would just hate to see, uh, a policy that said, okay, we're trying, we're shooting for eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI.
I guess there's the potential too, right? So if you bring a bunch of eighty to one twenty units on, then the people that have units that are in that, you know, below eighty range are seeing the competition in that higher price range, then they're able to like raise the, raise the price of rent because competition is there for that level, you know, maybe reinvest in the, in the, you know, spruce the properties up or whatever so that they can be in that next kind of like, looking for that next income level. So I guess the constant feedback of the change in the market, I think, is really important to your point earlier.
I, I really appreciate that point a lot, and thank you so much for bringing it up. I don't have that concern as much because one of the gems, I think Kristin brought up a really good point, that I think that there are people right now that are renting down, they're renting units that are less, that cost less than what they could afford, um, that eight percent that still exists that, you know, um, are in renting units that are under that eighty percent but likely have higher incomes. So I don't know, as we have those pressures, we need to worry about as much. So thank you for that point as well.
So just, just a quick again context benefit and we've got to move on, I know. But what happens is there's a, there's an adjustment of fair market rent, and the vouchers don't have a set value on them. They adjust from the baseline rent that somebody's charging between that and fair market rent. So owners of properties in areas where rents go up are actually further incentivized in most cases to keep the vouchers in place as much as they can and fight for it because the vouchers are worth more to them. Um, and frankly, in a sad way, without having to do substantial changes to the property, they usually get an increase in income based off of the increase in fair market rent. So that's actually a, a positive pressure to some increase in the, in the median rental. So I thought that's worth. Cool.
Does anybody need an app?
Well, the whole, the whole thing, having a watch, I didn't get to talk about housing all day, so this is actually pretty fun. Uh, thank you guys very much. Thanks for all the work. Any other questions or comments for close this item, public perspective? Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Nice job, by the way.
Great job. Okay, policies and priority strategy update, housing.
Um, so this is our, uh, regular, I'm going to link this up just because we're going to get to it again in a minute. Um, our regular goal update, our second goal update on housing. Um, don't pay no attention to the slides. Um, in the interest of time and our familiarity with these reports at this point, I'm wondering if we want to just respond to any questions that you all have instead of walking through it?
Yep. Um, just a reminder that the background presentations for giving context to what was, what goes into each of these data points and what makes a checker an X is available online.
Oh, we're on. Did you go into the?
Oh, wait, 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 I'm going to go back. I'm gentrifying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just call out items and keep going. Pardon me. So color coding for the results also available on that, if you want some background on that. Any questions or concerns from council before we move on? There's a lot of text there to read as well. Questions or concerns from the public? So seeing and hearing none, thanks for all the work to push forward on this, and there's a lot of great things happening, and we appreciate you guys working with that priority.
I, I just have a question about the, um, or the welcome packet. Is that going to be available in multiple languages or how, what, how's that going to be reflective of the community that we serve?
That, that is the intention, and actually, Paul Sarn, our new communications coordinator, has been doing a lot of work in looking into, uh, better ways of getting translation and has had some success with that. I will say that, uh, we haven't spent a ton of time on the welcome packet to date because he is deep in the midst of, uh, doing the annual report and the Community Services Spring brochure, so we're not going to be really actually looking at this for a few months. Um, but certainly that has been very much on his agenda, and he's been, I, I believe has had some breakthroughs with getting us better translation services, so.
I also know there's resources at the school district, folks that have a lot of experience translating those kinds of documents, so.
Great.
You don't need to look too far.
Great, that's good.
And I think there also may be, you know, we've had, Ray and I have had conversations with VRP to, um, perhaps do a different kind of welcome packet, so it's not necessarily the same kind of packet, but it's actually, um, uh, using their orientation process for new families coming into our community and going to them and meeting with them, so it might, it may not be a traditional kind of welcome packet as much as a welcome meeting, lunch, training. It might look different for different populations.
Great. Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, sorry, but we're here. Um, questions on just the home improvement loan program and then upcoming, um, revolving loan fund for code life safety improvements? Um, excited that we're going to, you know, update what we have and add those things. I was just curious, when I was reading the packet and wanted to look at the home improvement loan program and see, you know, was it attractive in its current? I couldn't find it. So can we, I think that may help us in getting people to use them is at least having access to them somewhere.
I got, um, a folder that had two pieces of paper in it. That's what I have on the home improvement loan program, but Angela has extensive files of all the loans that have been given.
I'm, I'm just more concerned from a, from a customer perspective. If I'm a homeowner and want a loan, I, I don't know anything about it and can't find it on the website.
That's because currently we're not, we're not doing them right now. We're, we're about to rewrite the whole.
So it's completely shut off right now.
That's a, so that's a complicated.
Yep.
Question with a long answer. So there's an agreement with Champlain Housing Trust to administer the program. So technically, somebody who wants, is interested would go to Champlain Housing Trust. We have significant questions and issues with the way the program's designed. It needs to have a complete redo. Um, so about two years ago, we really decided to stop sending people there while it got rebooted. So it is current, I would consider it currently not in use. A loan was made two years ago to do a roof, um, and that it was, it was done in a way that was very patched together, and that experience in part informed us that some attention needs to be paid here.
Okay. Any progress on the, um, on the other one for the code life safety improvements? Is there any more work put into that or still just kind of idea phase at this point?
The Firehouse, uh, that was contingent on completing the fire, updating the Firehouse software and having that ready to roll, which it now is live. Um, they've done the backend on that and set it up so that we have people going out and doing inspections live with the iPads, and we're gathering that data. Um, I believe that because the cycle of our, um, inspections is a four-year cycle to get through the whole city, we're going to have to set something up initially with an expectation that we'll be revising it on an annual basis to make sure that it's adequately reflecting the issues that we're finding in the field. So, um, the first data that we'll get from that will be in June. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so as of today, we're live, so the first report out we'll do in June and look at what we've compiled. Kind of a learning process, but we're, we're in a place that we've never been, certainly with the program and being able to collect the data and understand what it's telling us.
Is there any surprising needs so far?
And where the needs are. I, I mean, we're just starting to use it. Um, you know, we have checklists built and like I said, they're out, we're actually doing the physical inspections with them. You know, the, the residential ones, fifty-nine points that we're checking, um, on the checklist. So there's fifty-nine data points, um, on the initial, and we can change those as we move and as the Housing Commission does the work, you guys set policy, we can, we can shift those, and we've never been able to do that. So now it's just, we've got to click some time up to, up the clock and allow that data to, to be compiled.
Okay.
We have had some useful conversations about the potential for piggybacking some of these programs. Um, so for example, Burlington LED Program is really interested in getting fully involved in Winuski and spending out funds here. So the possibility of making accessing some of these funds contingent on having already gone through the LED program, for example, is one way that we could start to approach this, so we're leveraging multiple, um, funding sources to get as much, get a maximum income, I mean, impact.
Thanks.
At least she was complaining about her place the other day. Any other questions? Questions, concerns? Good question. All right, thank you. Thank you for the comprehensive report too. Very appreciated. Um, now we'll do gentrification monitoring update.
Okay. Um, so in the interest of brevity, um, I have used, we, this is the first update on the baseline gentrification data that I presented to you in August of two thousand seventeen. Um, I use the same criteria that I used last time, same methodology that I used last time. Um, again, this is a response to the Winuski Housing Needs Assessment recommendation that we, uh, invest in gentrification monitoring. Um, urban planning standards define gentrification at a census tract level, therefore this analysis has been done at a census tract level. Uh, criteria to meet gentrification status have been developed based on an approach used by Lance Freeman. Um, he is at Columbia University and is considered one of the foremost scholars on gentrification. The indicators of gentrification analyzed in this report were drawn from the Winuski Housing Needs Assessment in addition to an urban planning literature review. Um, if we can go to the next slide, Jesse. Uh, any useful discussion of gentrification should start with a commonly understood definition of the term. So the purposes of the gentrification reports that, um, I am doing here, I'm using the Brookings Institution definition, which defines gentrification as the process by which higher-income households displace significant numbers of lower-income residents of a neighborhood, thus changing the essential character and flavor of the neighborhood. Um, I'm not going to go through data point by data point like I did last time with the full charts. Um, what we're showing here is the, uh, gentrification indicator scorecard from the August two thousand. What we're showing here is the gentrification indicator scorecard from the August 2017 analysis. And that data was taken from, in most cases, it was 2010 US Census data versus 2015 American Community Survey, although there were cer, there were certain points that I looked at from 2000 until 2015. In August, a checkmark means that we met gentrification criteria and it's divided out into tract 24 and tract 25, which are the two census tracts in Winuski. And X means we did not meet gentrification criteria. So there were four places where we met gentrification indicator criteria. They were in median income in tract 25, renter and homeowner disparity in both tracts, and an increase in high-wage jobs with a corresponding decrease in low-wage jobs in tract 24. You'll go to the next slide. You'll see here between 2015 and 2016 data, we only meet criteria for two of those. So it appears that we're just, we're not meeting the criteria for gentrifying. I believe that what's happening in Winuski is we're revitalizing rather than gentrifying. And based on scholarly approaches to looking at gentrification, I think the data speaks for itself here. My recommendation would be that we very carefully continue to monitor things like incoming rental units and where those fall, but maybe put the full gentrification analysis to a six-month cycle.
That's great. And just the only other observation I think on, on top of that is, I think anytime there's a checkmark there, it's a, it's a great opportunity to send the alarm bells off when we're looking at those policies, too.
Yep, yep.
Other questions, comments, concerns for Heather on the gentrification scorecard?
So, um, is the comparison, so the, I'm just trying to, help me, sure. You to explain why we went from four to two. Is it because you're looking at two different time periods? So that this is looking at between 2016 and 2015, the data, you know, sort of what changed? From August to January that has us with two fewer checks?
Well, I, I think it does have to do with the time period because I think that the most significant changes that we had that may have leaned toward gentrification were actually between the year 2000 and 2010.
Well, I'll push back a little. I think form-based code has the potential to do more, to push on these things than the downtown development.
I have.
Because the downtown development specifically called for the inclusion of affordable units. Whereas that is not the case in form-based code. So I guess, I just wanna caution against making statements that gentrification isn't an issue. This is old data when you think about the development in response to form-based code. So 2016 data isn't going to respond to the new units that are being developed in the gateway districts, which is, for me, where I'm really interested in what are the pressure points being created by implementation of form-based code rather than development of the downtown.
I think the jump to using 2015 and 16 comparisons get inches us certainly closer. I mean, even the initial data we all pointed out, 2010 to 2015, there's a lot of different things that happened there. And it's hard to identify any particular thing, so hopefully going forward with the regular.
It should be more consistent and we shouldn't see, yeah, big fluctuation like that. I will say that in looking at income disparity between renter and homeowner in the year 2013, we had a $54,000 difference between a home, average, median homeowner and a median renter, whereas that has dropped down to a $38,000 difference in 2016. So there was this and now it's doing this. So I think that we're moving in the right direction now.
Nationwide, that's a trend.
Yeah.
People with higher incomes are renting longer, so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Certainly there's national trends happening here.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns on gentrification? It's forced. This shall be known as the housing meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
Any questions, concerns from the public? Again, this is something we've asked for to be regularly completed. Okay, so seeing and hearing none, thank you very much, Heather. You're off the hot seat.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your working time. Thanks. Okay, we're up to item G, FY19 capital improvement plan.
All right. Um, so I'm gonna start down this path, but I'm gonna ask Joe and John, Choate and John Addy to come up as well. They all have significant CIP items. Um, so I'm I'm gonna go through this a bit quickly because we had, while we wanted to really focus on the CIP as the last kind of individual presentation of the FY19 budget process, we have talked about a lot of these items in other presentations. So having said that, so CIP, um, there are several governing documents that dictate how we are to establish a capital improvement plan. It's outlined in state statutes, sorry, charter. The council recently approved a CIP policy. In 2007, there was a citywide vote to increase CIP funding by five percent a year. Um, we have an internal CIP procedure and we have the asset management system. What we use internally when we're identifying projects are the criteria established in your council policy as well as the, we have historically looked at this five percent vote increase. I will say that that, do people know what I'm talking about, this 2007 vote? Okay, so that is something that we have implemented each year since. It is not something that we actually are legally obligated to do. Um, and I would say moving forward, it's a level we need to look at because while it is a significant increase every year, I don't believe it's actually getting us to those preventive maintenance levels that we need to be funding to maintain our infrastructure. So it's a forewarning of what we might talk about in future years. Um, so our process to develop this CIP for FY19 was, we prepared this at the leadership team level informed by the strategic vision areas and the priorities we have heard from you over the last year. For the FY20 CIP that you'll see next year, our intent is to have that informed by the asset management system that we continue to build out and follow our internal adopted procedures, which means we will go through a review process internally that actually will pick up starting in about a month and a half to develop the FY21. And then that, those recommendations will be reviewed ideally by a finance committee and the Public Works Commission in advance of coming to you during the budget cycle. So these are the CIP-related FY18 accomplishments. Again, I'm a little bit flying through these because you saw the, most of these on the Public Works presentation a few weeks ago. And then we have, this presentation breaks out, the CIP is presented tonight differently than in past nights across funding sources, across enterprise funds. So this is the roll-up of the CIP general fund-supported budget. Please do note that at the end of you, of your presentation that you have in front of you is an updated full document of the CIP, which is different than the one in your budget book. So when you're looking at that, please look at the one that's in the presentation tonight. So what is included in this general fund budget? I'm gonna turn it over to the chief to talk quickly about the big ad. As you heard me talk about, well, you've heard us talk about a couple of times now. We are recommending the prioritization of replacing a fire truck with the CIP over some other general fund expenditures. So chief, if you wanna give us a quick update on what we're proposing.
Yeah, so as it says, this is a replacement of 1991 Sutton that remains out of service. This is a used truck that was purchased, trying to buy some time several years ago. And it's to the point where it's, it's not safe to be, to be using in service. So it has remained out of service for upwards of three months at this point. Our truck set is two pumppers and an aerial. I think the cities realized that it needed to address the, specifically the fire truck issue for many years. And there was no plan. This is usually a couple of year process to, to even spec a truck like this for a department. So it led us to look at what, what we refer to as demo units. A lot of these big manufacturer, manufacturers take these, build these trucks and, and travel around other departments. And so this, the proposed truck is a demo truck. It's never seen fire. It's never operated at an emergency scene, but it has traveled around to other fire departments and, you know, the, the department, we did go through our, our needs and what we feel the city needs are as far as operational and the ISO ratings and what we need to maintain ourselves. And then we tried to take a look at the future. What, how is our job gonna change in the future? I hope to, in the future, really taking into consideration going to a two-truck set. I believe this truck is step one of that. So when we replace the aerial, it is quite feasible that we will, we will roll operationally into a type of truck that will allow us to, to go to a two-truck set here in the city and operate how we are and meet the future needs and the ISO. So I could go all day of talking about fire trucks, but, you know, we talked to.
As long as it's not housing.
Changed the taste. You know, we did talk to and appreciate four major vendors, kind of working with four major ven, you know, vendors, trying to get to a point of finding a truck. You know, there's, any one of them can put a truck here in the city. Sutton's been here in the city for 24 years. We have some comfort with them, with their vendor, the type of truck, how it's held up for us. And we're looking to, to, to fill that gap. This is immediate delivery with this model. If we were to spec a truck, again, we'd be looking at two years of kind of talking internally what that is and getting all the pieces worked out and placing the order. It would be 12 to 16 months for the manufacturer to deliver that truck. I'm here to tell you, depending on another truck that we're solely depending on, I don't mind when we had two old trucks. There's a little bit of a comfort zone. To be down to a 25-year-old pumper, not all that comfortable here in the city. There's a lot of risk and we're depending on a pretty old truck. So this is more of immediate delivery, depending on favorable votes. You know, 60 days after town meeting, that truck could be here in the city.
So just to be very specific about what we're looking for, so the truck in its entirety costs $473,000. We are recommending that we use $100,000 FY17 fund balance and $137,500 from the FY19 CIP as the down payment. And let, and then the chief has negotiated this lease, lease-to-own option with the manufacturer. So it would be an annual payment of $27,500 for 12 years at a 3.99% interest rate. So it will not be a bond vote. This is using the leasing policies that the city has had several years of experience with.
So to be clear, in the budget, on the line item under vehicles and equipment fire, that includes the debt service? It's not included in the debt service line?
Not in the initial year. Not until I actually have a debt service agreement.
Okay, so.
But we're carrying it there right now just so we don't lose the expenditure in future out years.
Okay, hold on. So just to back up, so where is, where is that debt, that lease payment in the budget? Is it in the current debt service or in the fire?
So in the CIP under vehicles and equipment fire, there's new 2019 pumper rescue down payment. That's the total amount. And then in FY20, you start seeing the 2019 pumper rescue lease amount.
What you're seeing in the roll-up also includes other equipment that is annually replaced in the fire department. So in the roll-up that you're looking at, what fire line item is both?
42590. That 42590 includes the 27?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Let's just keep, any other questions right now for John, specific to that issue? Got some kind of global questions about practice, but. Any questions from the public?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Um, so the next two slides detail out the rest of the general fund proposal highlights. So you see, we have our debt service from past years that we will continue to pay. We are recommending some equipment purchases for FY19, including a dump truck for Public Works that Joe can talk about, the vehicle lift that you've heard us talk about before that will allow us to do maintenance on all of our vehicles, the lease payment for the police car and camera equipment. We're also carrying $93,000 for street and sidewalk work, which will include the paver and tree work we've talked about in the TIF district as well as sidewalk repairs throughout the city. And then several smaller amounts for building upgrades. Finally, in the general fund CIP, we do carry capital for the TIF district. And we are recommending $45,000 to fund the potential power upgrades at Rotary Park, which is something we've heard a lot about, as well as repair the law lighting and the downtown street lights. Shall I keep going?
Just a quick question on the street pavers, if you would.
Yeah.
Is that something we intend to put out for bid, to have done? Or is that something we intend to try to do ourselves?
Well, initially, Ryan Lambert and myself were gonna get some, our brist and an engineer involved to figure out the best way to solve our problem with the roots coming up through the pavers. We have done some research and we have a couple of options, but we don't know how viable they are. We don't really know the cost yet, so we're just barely getting into that now. So I can't really answer, you know, what, what we're gonna do about it yet. But we're in infancy, starting.
I guess my only concern and reason for asking that is that in the past, we've done some of these or put on the board that we're gonna have these projects done and collected the money for them and put the money aside for them. But we haven't had the ability to get those jobs on ourselves. So that's why I was asking if it was gonna be done by a vendor or whether we're gonna do that ourselves.
Well, any slabjacking that we do in the city, that would be by a vendor. And we, we now have the capability of doing a lot of our own concrete work in the city, sidewalks and curbing, where we didn't have that capability before. We've hired some people who have that knowledge and we've actually gone out and done a lot of our own work since then. So some of that work will be done by us. But within that is the tree and paver work that we're really not sure what's direction to go in yet because we don't know how much it's gonna cost. We only have a couple of options that we are looking at right now.
Thank you.
This is also an area where we have reduced our expenditure plan for FY19 to cover the expenditure of the fire truck and other priorities. So we're, we're anticipating doing less street and sidewalk work in FY19 than in past years. Just in the interest of full transparency.
Yeah, I, so I'm just gonna make a really global comment in that we, we do continue to put, instead of having the CIP fund act as a staged investment where we then spend money at a certain point, it's being used for a lot of debt service, a pretty significant portion, and we're adding to it. And I, I just, I wanna raise that flag as a community. I think that's a really important conversation to have because we're taking away from our capacity to save for the future by using it for debt service to make payments for things now. And eventually debt will be retired, but I, I think philosophically, that'd be a really interesting thing for us to take a look at when we get to that, these conversations around debt management and our capacity to do that in general. And get a sense, just whether or not that's a, that's a good practice. I mean, I've, I've always questioned it and I'd hoped that at some point we could pay down the existing debt and there to the point where it wasn't there anymore. And start to use those funds for, for capital improvement savings. And then transfer when those new debts came, when there was a bond. You know, I understand why the city did it, but I don't think a street bond frankly is an appropriate place to put here in capital improvement. I think that voters should vote, have to vote on that and decide to make those improvements and understand it impacts taxes. That's my personal reflection on that. I think from a values perspective, I do want to acknowledge that we are adding additional long-term debt into the capital improvement fund, which means we're saving less for something. We're forwarding it out of here. We're borrowing money from ourselves for the future, from a stream of payment, so... I didn't come up with a solution, I just, I brought the problem. And I mean, the solution's more money, right? But, you know, I just, from an overall kind of mechanics and practice standpoint, you have a, you have a flinch of question.
So, I think having debt service that's funded past capital, having it in the capital budget is an appropriate place to put it because it presents that whole, that complete picture of how we, as a community, have invested our tax dollars. I think the question, perhaps more the question you're trying to get at is, what is that level we, as a community, need to be investing to do the regular preventive maintenance we need to be doing to maintain our infrastructure? And if we're not thinking about it from that perspective and thinking, I think what we've done historically in the city is think, thought about it from the perspective of what money do we have available and therefore what projects should we do? As opposed to what's the work we need to do and how do we fund it? If we can switch to the latter, I don't think it really matters where the debt service sits. It's what's the investment of the dollars into the infrastructure that we're making.
Yeah, I guess philosophically, I would, I would, I would differ a little bit from that in that I think, I think as much as possible, it's a good idea to get debt off on its own and have this be able to build capacity for future projects, if humanly possible, and separate the debt service off, if that's possible. And maybe it's not, and it certainly won't be for a number of years for a lot of these longer-term notes, but...
Most of these are very shorter-term notes. They're five-year equipment notes. I think the longest one would be the fire truck at 12 years. The only thing that is long-term on here is the 2012 street reconstruction bond that was a 20-year bond.
Yeah. It's, but we blend, right? I mean, we're paying some, we're paying some vehicle leases out of general fund operating budgets, are we not?
No. The only leases that we are paying out of the operating budget are the operating lease or the electric cars that we do not own.
Right. So everything here has ownership rights in the end from a cap, it has to do that from a debt perspective to reach that anyway, from a debt level, okay. Trying to put an island alone, that's okay. Other questions, probably rock and roll?
So, here you see the roll-up of the water fund CIP, or actually, this is the complete water fund CIP. The highlights of this, this is pretty straightforward, are included here, some debt service, a portion of payment for a utility truck, and a small contribution to reserves. And the exciting one is the wastewater and stormwater CIP. And you see the full spreadsheet here, it's also at the end of the presentation in a slightly larger format. And John, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Yeah, we had a pretty robust conversation about this during the budget process. Not sure I can add anything other than we're looking at the wastewater improvement bond vote in March. The intent is to put forward a request for the 1.2 for the headworks and the 250 for the addition, building addition garage in the same vote. Probably, the repayment of that won't be through the clean water SRF, just the headworks portion, mainly because we could call out a local contractor cheaper than a, somebody who's building a wastewater plant to build a building, like a garage. So that wouldn't be reflected in a, in an SRF loan. Might not be subject to like the Davis Bacon wage rate, US Steel, the things like that. So I think we could do a cheaper, not as an SRF loan. But I've asked the question of the state and our engineer, just to confirm that, so... Other than just going point-blank through each one, do you folks have any questions about any of them?
I think to your point, we went through this honestly too.
So just as a foreshadowing that at next week's meeting, you'll see a resolution that you have to approve in advance of a bond vote for your consideration. Heads up that that's coming. Thank you, John. So the final one is the parking CIP. Again, we talked about this briefly during the parking presentation. Highlight, high-level highlights from this fund are additional investment signage and access control that we saw, that we heard the need for as part of the parking study and our annual preventive maintenance to maintain that garage. So we have a summary here of what we are proposing for use of reserves to fund this comprehensive CIP. So we are pulling funds, reserve funds from a couple of different pots. And then finally, just to acknowledge that there are some very significant emerging issues on the capital front. One, new Public Works Director starting in a couple of weeks. A new CIP procedure for implementation in FY20 that will actually, with John Choate's leadership, build out a better internal vetting process before they come to you. We have the Main Street revitalization project and potential bike facility discussion on Weaver Street that we have, we're seeking additional funds for. Myers Pool conversation, the impact fee study conversation, we talked about it last week's meeting. We are seeing development up East Allen Street and that may require some infrastructure updates as well. Obviously, we don't want to lose sight of City Hall and the O'Brien Community Center. And you heard the chief talk last week about potential impacts for the police department if we go to regional dispatch and some small capital investments that will be needed in this building. Small issues, small emerging issues.
Nothing to fret about.
CIP questions? This is a cake that sometimes comes largely baked from past years, from an investment pattern standpoint, what we've been saving towards and new goals. I think the items that have come up that are new this year or are, that are being addressed, I mean, we've kind of talked at a lot of length regarding the mechanics of how we're addressing those in terms of bumping up the fire truck to being something that we always had a number for but never putting money aside towards, or the headworks project especially. And again, I think we've also talked quite a bit about use of reserves in this area and what those reserve levels are from a concern or risks standpoint. Am I missing anything?
I would just like to add also that I think once we get the full picture of the CIP and the planning out process, that we also go back and reconsider as to the percent that we're asking for from the community as far as the annual increase goes, because that number may not be the right number for what we actually need. I think it's important to reevaluate that and put that in front of the community as a whole and see what their opinion is of it.
Yeah, I think it's important to, with that conversation, like you said, be able to tell a story and explain why.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I just, I want to point out that that was done, and it's interesting. Council sets the tax rate, I mean, I think it's an important conversation for us to have. That's a non-binding, that was a non-binding resolution that was put on that ballot. I don't know how it was worded, but the fact is, is legally, we're not bound by it, so... Regardless of that, the onus is on us to give a very compelling case to people if we are gonna increase it. Questions, comments, concerns? This is about to be the shortest CIP presentation ever, because I think of what's coming next. And I think also, and we've talked through quite a few of these items leading up to this, which is good. We're not trying to get all those-
Nice layout of the budgets, in other words. Just want to get to this one, it's a lot of it.
Okay. Wow, you guys are off easy, okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm gonna ask for a three-minute recess and we'll reconvene at 8:36.
She's getting mail from Essex, the board about the chief, that's what I'm saying together.
I turned the heat up tonight. It was set to sixty, sixty degrees. It was not good.
Of course, of course it was minus fifteen last week too, so.
Alright, we will reconvene the Winnissee City Council meeting and pick up our agenda where we left. We just completed the capital improvement plan and we'll move on to the administrative service proposal.
So, um, with the FY nineteen budget, we recommend, I recommended to you, um, one of the recommendations I made was to reduce the officer, with the um, leadership proposal budget was to reduce the office manager position to thirty hours a week. Um, following that recommendation, um, we have actually received two resignations from our front office staff. Um, both of our part-time staff have resigned to take full-time jobs. Um, so with any staffing change, there's always an opportunity to look at um, how we provide services, how we provide services as effectively and efficiently as possible. Um, so we have gone through a process with the leadership team and the administrative office staff team to look at um, how we best staff moving forward and this proposal is a result of those discussions. Um, so what we are recommending is uh, to go from um, five employees, um, two of whom were recommended to work forty hours a week and the other three to work part-time, uh, to an amended proposal to have four um, staff who all work full-time and are fully benefited. Um, it's the same number of hours of service for the public, um, so it's not a reduction in, in that service area. Um, and we believe that this is the best way to provide services and we can do that with the four bodies instead of five. Um, it does have a financial impact that you'll, that you see in the memo. Um, so in totality, it's a twenty-nine thousand dollar add to the uh, leadership proposed budget. Um, we have found, based on that staffing level, um, approximately seventy-seven hundred of that will be uh, paid for through general fund transfer according to our policy. We are recommending um, with the discussion from last meeting about the treasure position and the reduction of duties, to move some of the funds currently allocated to that position, um, to the administrative staffing for a balance of twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So that has a five-dollar and forty-two impact, forty-two cent impact on the average property taxpayer. Um, in the model, you will also see um, the purposes, uh, if, if we approve this model with the budget, um, the purposes uh, associated with each job title that will change, that will change slightly. Um, I also want to point out that one of the changes that will come with this is essentially the staff will be, um, three of the staff will be uh, continue with the title of uh, city clerk or assistant city clerk. Um, and they will take on the responsibility of supporting the council and doing the minutes of these meetings, um, which will free up Angela's time to do more higher-level financial processing for the city. Um, so you will start seeing new faces here at the table. So that is the proposal. Um, I'm not necessarily looking for action tonight, but it is something you'll need to um, weigh as you have your other conversations about the FY nineteen budget.
Questions return specific to this item, not budget impact, please. We'll pick that up when we do the rest of our items, but about the, this specific portion of this issue?
I mean, I think uh, key point is retaining service to the public while.
A- and frankly, I think from a retention standpoint, we've learned through some other positions and some success that taking two part-time positions and getting them into a full-time one provides additional consistency and retention opportunities.
You're saying you want to take the impact of this to the budget in the next item?
Well, I'm saying it's part of the, the, the financial conversation we're having at the end tonight, is all. So if you've got questions about it specifically to this, but just, we're not treating it like a, like a sole cut and add, it's part of the overall budget. I guess is what I was saying is, that's part of the proposal that we're getting ready to talk about, the larger proposal.
So I guess my only question is that, that, I'm a little bit confused about the difference between the leadership proposal originally and then this egg. Because the leadership proposal was to reduce the hours, right? So there was gonna be a.
So the leadership proposal was to reduce the total hours of service. Um, so if you look in the memo, the, the box on the left has the leadership proposal budget. So it reduced the office manager position from forty hours a week to thirty hours a week. So it was a reduction in ten hours a week.
That is, okay.
And that we are maintaining that cut, but with different bodies.
I got you. I, I read this wrong. I didn't read that as the leadership proposal. I read that as what it was before. I just liked that. I looked at it wrong. So, thank you. Clear.
Other questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Very good. We will move into, any questions, concerns, comments from the public? So seeing and hearing none, we will move into requests use FY seventeen fund balance.
Um, so fund balance historically, um, have looked at in a, one fellow shot, uh, allocate it all out. We are not doing that this year. We are coming to you with specific asks for needs we have in the moment, but leaving a balance there to respond to emerging needs in the future. Um, so here you see the request of use for fund balance that we have talked about throughout uh, the budget process. Um, so Angela put together the summary of what uh, the decisions made thus far, um, with the FY seventeen fund balance for a remaining amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand. So tonight, we are recommending um, the allocation of a hundred thousand of that to fund the down payment of the fire truck that you just heard about through the CIP presentation. Um, fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars to fund the rest of the CIP general fund gap. And then six thousand dollars to fund the municipal planning grant, grant match that we got for master planning, which we had carried in the operational budget, but taken out because it is a one-time expense, not an ongoing expense. That would leave a remaining unassigned fund balance, balance of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred. So still um, allows us some flexibility for the remainder of the fiscal year if emerging issues arise. Um, and this is on for a discussion item, but will be on for a, a vote at your next meeting as it does have um, budget implications with the rest of the FY nineteen budget as currently presented.
Okay. Questions, concerns, it leaves. Um, leaves the balance again, I think these are conversations we've generally had in regards to fund balance usage. Are there questions, concerns? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Any questions, concerns from the public? And seeing and hearing none, we will move on to tonight's final agenda item, which is discussion, um, of the FY nineteen budget discussion interaction.
So clearly, I made a strategic error by putting this last on the agenda. I need to tell you a joke or something. Um, so this is our attempt, really, there's no additional information here, but um, in the interest of coming to you as prepared as possible next week with a final budget amount to vote on in advance of town meeting day and not forcing Angela into live editing spreadsheets, uh, we want to have a conversation about um, your inclination about budget additions or subtractions you'd like us to cost out, um, or explore in advance of coming to you with that final number next week.
So we receive those numbers of um, two-point-one-six from the, uh, so the additional add line, two-point-six, one-six percent. We receive the changes from budget cut add of one-point-one-nine percent. I, the first thing is, wh- where do, where do we fall now with the update that we just saw from the admin piece on those percentages? Did you guys bring tonight updated?
That's, uh, I did not do that. You probably could do it quickly if you wanna keep chatting.
Like an abject terror.
Can't take minutes and do math.
Ambidexterity. You guys, I thought it was like twenty-six thousand divided by six. Okay. So I think the goal here is to try to assess out if there are items, um, they're gonna come up, they're gonna cause the potential math to change. Um, historically, as you reminded, the way we've done this is we've brought the cut add list in the last night. Um, and sometimes we shuffle things around. We try to do it the meeting before to see if there's a, you know, there's, there are baseline things that we wanna set as a foundation of that conversation. Um, but this is to try to kind of up that a little bit and get some of those items on the table. And to start to take a temperature too of what these percentages look like. Um, in part because if, you know, somebody says, "By gosh, we're gonna cut it off at one percent." Um, you know, and, and I really don't like this, this, and this about the difference between one percent and one-point-nine-one percent. Right? And I'm just going based off of, you know, where we were from leadership proposal and additional add items. Um, so that those adjustments can be made. This is um, this is also my time to remind you that this is your budget. And each line item on this is your budget. Um, and we did things a little differently this year. And we have a leadership proposal and we have a proposal before you that is um, reflective of what uh, staff believes is the, the best way to execute the goals that we've laid out for them. But in the end, each line item of this budget is yours. And if there's a particular piece of it, while we haven't found that to be a, a great methodology of budgeting, going through each item and hacking each one out, um, to be particularly good, uh, particularly useful methodology, I think it would be a really good time to bring up if you've got any issues or concerns in regards to the items that were baked into the budget. Um, staffing contingencies, salary contingencies, et cetera. Um, or any items that were added prior to the budget coming here, um, if you've got an issue with any of those items. Um, and then, you know, probably most obviously, the items that are on this, um, you know, the expenses between staff and benefits um, and others and additional revenue, um, projections, um, that we have in the um, the, the sheet that shows you what was done to get to the net zero budget and what was done to, from the um, uh, leadership proposal and then what the, the final add column looks like. Okay. So, um, are you guys hooked up to this projector? Could you, can you bring the um, the proposal up? So we're back now that, since there's.
The line item budget?
Mm-hmm. Well, I think the, too, wanna see the leadership proposed budget, that summary sheet, that PDF. It's got the, the items listed of what was.
Yep.
And maybe just that, a- access to that drive in general, in case there's some specific questions.
Wait, don't do it yet. My internet connection appears to be very slow.
This is where it's fun. This is where I get to look back and forth and say, "Okay, everybody." Um, what are our thoughts? What, what do people? Number one, I think it's, you know, you've got before you, well, it's not one-point-ninety-nine-one, it's gonna be something different than that.
It's two-point-one-five percent.
You've got a two-point-one-five um, increase before you. Um, and I think it would be great to see on that sheet too, what that net impacted taxpayers look like that's being considered.
So that I probably don't have.
You said it was two-point-one-five?
Two-point-one-five percent.
Previously, we had the, with the additional adds, two-point-one-six was forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents to a two-hundred-and-twenty-five K home. So it's pretty similar.
Yeah, I'm curious, is the cent perspective too? What that would look like? I mean, I know penny raises, we can get there pretty easily. Simple Excel, yeah.
So I don't have the live spreadsheet of, okay, can you turn that on now?
So we set this out, we did make a strategic goal not to, I mean, everybody said they wanted to keep things as close as possible to, you know, zero and that's always what we enter into, right? We don't enter in with, I think this is a really good year to go up by six percent. Um, but at the same time, I guess, maybe the first question is how people, um, what their senses of, you know, whether we feel, if the two-point-one-five is it's gonna be that middle proposal and then, I guess subsequently, two-point-three-five or three-seven percent?
So I, I'm sorry, I don't have the live, um.
Right there.
Well, this is.
This one? It's a PDF though.
Yeah, but the question is, I mean, they just baked in a new proposal. So have those numbers been run in coordination with this?
So the, if you take the leadership budget and just add on the twelve thousand for the administrative support, it's an increase of two-point-one-five percent. Um. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Anybody's looking for us? How many cents is that on the tax rate?
Yeah.
By the percentage, what's the?
I mean, I wanna, I wanna.
There's a penny rate increase.
Like, we need to be able to talk in, what's the percent increase, what's the impact and what's the, what's the cent?
So if you wanna take a one-minute break, I can go, go download it from my docking station.
Cool. And we, uh, instead of recessing, while you're doing that, I think too, this group can keep talking. Meaning that some of the, the others of you are gonna have to start talking. I'd, I'd, I'd love some feedback in whether, I mean, from the two-point, whatever that's gonna look like, percentage standpoint, what do people feel good about what that accomplishes from a proposal standpoint? Are there specific aspects of it that are concerning? This is a different, we, we've gone about, about this in a different way. We've spent less time in this budget process, looking at specific issues and considering them in silos. And spent more times looking at an overall budget perspective, so. Figuring that that's the best way to start the conversation is sort of looking at that overall.
Well, I think if we're gonna go to bond for some of the projects that we're looking at, trying to do, I think we need to be cognizant of that on the tax side of things. There's also the other facet with the school that is out of our control. We also need to be cognizant of that. I mean, it's, it's some of it's within our control, what a lot of it is about. So. I don't, I think your six percent request is probably out.
Do we know where the school board is in their process? Budget discussions, did we, to recall, we got?
We've heard early numbers, but we did not hear. I haven't heard anything at all. We can ask if that's a conversation, if anybody had had it at this juncture, Jesse's in closer contact with Sean.
That's only one piece of the puzzle there too?
Yeah, of course.
School boards do their work through the legislature response, and that's really up in the air right now.
And we're really just looking at the column that's the, the one-point-nine-one percent? Or are we looking at this? Well, I know that one-point-nine-one has changed to two-point-one-five, but, right?
Let's question.
Right.
Looks like very early numbers. The school is saying maybe two-point-nine percent.
The difference, you know, the additional add pieces. Too, and that's, that's another question I have on this admin piece because we reinstated office manager here. I'm assuming that that's actually, yeah, see, I don't think that's a correct statement to say two-point-one-five. I think it impacts the.
No, it doesn't because of the salary savings, um, with the second position going away. We used most of the savings from that salary to reinstate. And then we used the remaining piece to start giving additional hours to the other part-time position, but we didn't have enough to also give benefits.
And so these are the items too that have been put in front of you. The reason also, if there are specific issues on the general fund budget details that people, you know, wanna bring up, wanna have issue with. You know, then that's, that's also open. I mean, there's, again, you have the sheet with, it's got column in, I guess I'll call, that shows if something changed significantly, what was it? And if there's an issue with that, great. If not, I mean, if somebody's, wants to bring a specific issue to that, we're not gonna go through that line by line tonight. It's just not feasible. Um, but what we can do is if you've got something that from a, you know, something that was cut or something was added, you've got significant concerns about, that's why we had them do that percentage change spreadsheet for everybody. You know, certainly, having that information or those concerns now or ahead of the next meeting as much as possible would be very good. Um, for us to be able to have the detail about it, to be able to easily adjust. Talking about it now would be good from a value perspective. But then if not, then it's really drilling down to the issues that are presented in terms of what staff represented, is where the hard choices were made.
Yeah.
One specific, oh, sorry, Matt.
But it's not seeing how it could possibly be at two-point-one-five percent when, where this suggests that if we added a hundred and eight thousand dollars on top of the leadership proposal, that would only lead to two-point-one-six percent. So, that, I guess Jesse will clarify. I generally was prepared to support the leadership proposal, didn't have any concerns or read. I think a lot of difficult discussions occurred and hard work, um, and creative thinking and um, to get to that point, I'm concerned about the magnitude of the leap based on a twelve-thousand-dollar add. Does it make a lot of sense to me? So Jesse, I was just saying, I don't. Can you help me understand why adding twelve thousand dollars leads to a two-point-one-five percent tax rate increase versus adding a hundred and eight thousand dollars, which only takes it to two-point-one-six?
Would that be additional?
On top of.
Right.
That's right. Thank you. It's been a while since we. So that would have been a four.
Point three.
Point whatever.
Four-point-three one.
Just under. Okay, that makes more sense.
Forty-eight dollars plus forty-eight dollars.
Plus, so it's an additive exercise.
Hey, I will, I was confused on that too.
It's not just a point-two difference in the original proposal between one-point-one-nine-one and two-point-one-five, it's a, that's the difference between two and four basically, percent.
So. It's hard. I, I have some challenges with this stuff, only because I feel like some of the initial cut suggestions are a little wacky. Like the, cutting the public works director as, as an option. It feels, feels like it was put in there to just hold that money. Cause it's like, I, I can't imagine this body coming and being like, "Well, we're gonna cut the pub, gonna cut a director position when like, in a budget of whatever that department has, that there can't be." Like, if, if the number that a department needs to find is a thirty thousand dollar savings, that, that would be the initial go-to. the initial go-to. So I get stuck a little bit, cause obviously, especially now, we just hired a public works director. Like, that's just an example in here, but like, you know, I, it's just challenging to even start to make any sort of recommendations on how to adjust this, because it feels like there are items that were put in to like, it seems, it seems like, it doesn't seem realistic totally.
So if I, could I respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I can understand why you feel that way. It was not done as a placeholder of saving the dollars. We went through a long process with the leadership team to come up with the hundreds of thousands we had to cut to get to the level tax rate budget. And the decision made specifically about that position is that we have two strong leaders in that department who had demonstrated their ability to keep the operation wheel, operational wheels on the bus. And instead of looking to cut another position in that department or in the city, that we were more interested if that was where we wanted to go, if we wanted to cut to that level of figuring out how to continue with two operational leads. As opposed to cutting a CDL driver or a another, or a police officer or another staff person in the city. It wasn't made lightly, it wasn't made as a, as a, I know, nine o'clock at night, for lack of a better word, a threat. It was really what we felt like we could cut and operationally continue to, to function as a city. It definitely is a sacrifice, as you heard me say on the first night, it was the one I was the most anxious about. But it was not meant as a as a threat. And, and so an option for you, if you really wanted to see us cut additional funds is to say, is to direct me in the next couple of days to go back with staff and look for thirty thousand dollars of other funds to cut. That's not that position. You can certainly challenge us to do that and, and we can do that.
You, I, this, this methodology of doing it, of having a leadership proposed budget is always gonna inherently invite those questions into the process. It just is. As to whether the proposal's been structured in a way to yield an outcome one way or the other, which is, I think, essentially what you're concerned about. And I mean, you know, we hear the process and the thinking behind it. That's our job is to ask questions to ensure that that's, that's not what occurred and that's not what happened. So I think that's, that is a lot of this opportunity.
I mean, that being said, I think that, for me, puts me in a position where you know, with, you know, I was feeling more comfortable with the leadership proposal, obviously before it went up. So that, to me, means that I, I don't know exactly, you know, if we start jockeying for items here like has been in years past, which is big that, but that's what it comes down to a lot of times. Then like, I look, I look at this list and I'm, you know, trying to, to figure out where to, you know, trim to keep it down and it, it's hard when it's just this list and, and you're starting to, you know, it's, there's nothing, I feel like in years past, there's often things that jump out more. The more, the more obvious cuts, even if everyone doesn't agree on them. So, I don't know what I'm trying to say at this point, but for me, I feel like I'm not totally comfortable just increasing the leadership proposal and, and accepting that.
Accepting the, the adjusted version tonight?
Yeah, the two point one five. Again, you know, it sucks to start to like, think about this. It's almost like a, you know, sense that we're, that we're, that we're playing over, cause when we're looking at a full budget and, and thinking about cutting sixteen thousand dollars out or something, that's not a, a lot of money, but I really think that, like, it's the, also the respectful thing to do with taxpayers is to continually like scrutinize every dollar that's spent here. And I personally had an opinion on where I wanted this to, to come in. I think I was pretty open about that, as low as possible in the beginning. So I think for me, I'd like to cut it back down under two percent. And if I have to start to like, look at this list and say, what are the things there? The list confuses me a little bit, cause it's a new format. I like it, but it's like new, so I have to like, look at a bunch too to figure out what's actually staying and what's going. But then does, does that mean that the library circulation assistant goes, you know, like that? Doesn't feel good either. But at the same point, we've also staffed up the library over the past few years and does that mean it's in flux and can be staffed back down? Do, I don't, I'm trying to look at this and see what other things are on here. Does that make any sense? I don't know, I don't know how everyone else feels about adding and where it should be and how we get it to a point that is acceptable.
I, I would just say from a functional standpoint, that's a risk that staff runs when they put a budget forward in this methodology is that, well, no, just gonna finish that. You number, number one, you could bounce back and say, I want this number. You go back and give me a recommendation of what you just think best gets you that number. Or you, you, you basically pluck something out where we haven't gone through the same sort of priorities conversation and discussion. That that's an inherent difference between this budget process and the last, is that we haven't spent as much time talking about where does this rank in terms of priorities and how has that gone? That, I mean, that's just reality. We haven't, we haven't spent any time there. We could ask those questions. We could ask them to talk about value of things. Or you, you can propose to impose your own value on it and say, I, you know, I feel like this is a place where we could, we could sacrifice and see if there's a conversation to be had there.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make it seem like I think I know better than the directors of our departments and the manager of the city, which pieces should be or shouldn't be cut necessarily.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not in, in the department all day. So I guess my preference personally would be to get a recommendation from staff on how they would propose getting this back down to under two percent. But, I don't know what that looks like, because this was a, cause if this was the, the best foot forward initially, then it's gonna be one of, then I guess we're into a prioritization conversation. Because if this is the best foot forward, then it's, these items won't change. But if things have moved and there's other recommendations, then I would be open to seeing another proposal for how to get that back down. And if the proposal is, is what we got, we're standing behind our, our, our initial leadership proposal, then I would I personally think we need to get into that nasty thing.
Yeah. I, I would just say this is what you, this is what we got elected to do and it is, it is our budget. It is, it is what we put forward to taxpayers. It's staff's job to operate the budget and to own it and to execute it in a way that meets the needs and services of the community. So I just, it, it is important that we listen to the professionals. I think, I think the group's been very respectful and responsible in that manner and listened to the the great, very smart professionals that we have here. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to empower, embolden in some way to say like, this is the one opportunity that you do have over the course of the year to, to have that conversation and it's the one time you get to have it, so. I don't think you should remove something off of the, the table if you've got something to say about it due to deference, because I, I think that we, we, we give lots of deference and do a good job of that generally as a body, I think so anyway. And respect the professionals that are here, but this is one that we should, when we pass, we should feel good about as, as being ours only. Sorry. This is my birthright speech. So I, yeah, I mean, I think, well, I'll shut up.
Do we know what the pending impact is?
The, sorry, pending impact.
Two point one five percent, what the, how that translates.
Two oh five.
So it's this.
It's not including that extra.
Oh, is it, uh, is it up? Thank you. It's because we're so close to.
So it's two point. Zero two one five, is that what this is?
Two point one five cents?
Yeah.
We recommend. It's a memory tool.
So am I, am I hearing that your interest is to try and to get to a two point, a two point oh threshold?
I'm interested to get it back down to one point nine one.
You like that number?
Well, I mean, I think that generally, you know, again.
It is a palindrome.
You know how I love that. Again, I'm, I'm interested to get it back down to the initial level of that leadership proposal. If that means between one point nine and two, then I'm, it's, I would be fine with that.
Giving out a little band of flexibility.
But yeah, that's, I mean, again, personally, that's what I'd like to see as taxpayer, I feel good about having a less than two percent increase. I think that's a good space to be in. No one else agrees, then no one else agrees, but.
I think it's hard to be, to confront the ad at this stage in a, in a way that bumps us over a marker, which may or may not have actual meaning to people, but I think when you talk, that, you know, it has meaning as we, we started to talk early on about keeping the increase as low as possible and certainly aligned with the cost of living increases. Can you remind me what, what the where I should be looking for with the CPI or whatever the measure you were using to compare this growth to growth in the cost of living or?
So you're assuming a two point two percent CPI in this budget? Is that what?
I think that's right, cause one of the directives we gave was, or goals we gave was keep it at or below CPI. So I'm just.
That's a different question than what I just answered. So we looked at CPI when we built the budget in November and it was at point one nine. We had seen it was two point seven this fiscal year. So we, to build this budget, so based on the salaries and benefits calculations are based on a two point two percent cost of living increase. The CPI from October to, or what would have been November to October was one point nine percent, but you know, it's rolling annually. So it depends on.
And it's been trending upward. When I ran the numbers in December, that was, it was over two percent. And that's just the CPI, all items from the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
So I do apologize for the late administrative proposal. I think whenever, you know, we learned of one of these resignations today. And whenever, from a, from a management perspective, whenever we have a vacancy, it's important to look at what are the creative things we can do to most appropriately staff. And you know, the budget you're seeing in front of you is a budget we built in November. And it is, it is really unfortunate and it's timing and we certainly can go back and find, you know, spend the next couple of days figuring out how to get it back below two percent. You can give us direction on where you wanna see that done, or you can ask us to come up with three scenarios of where we might find that. Because I agree with you, it is, it is a last minute addition. But I felt an obligation to look at it because we do have these vacancies. We could also, you know, just pull that addition and say staff at your previously recommended levels and look to hire two part-time staff. There are lots of different options for us to consider to get back under that two percent.
And I think that would be my preference would be to ask for, I like the idea of, you know, three scenarios to get there. And, and, and so of the three, what you might recommend.
For that particular position?
No.
No, to get this back to one.
Getting below two percent?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's an important threshold to you as well?
I think, given the fact that CPI has been between one point nine and two point two, the two percent mark, marker is.
Feels numerically significant to you?
You know, it's just, it's, it feels significant, whether or not it is. Happy to be, happy to debate with everybody here.
It was two point one December to December.
I, I'm gonna, I'll, I'm gonna verbalize something that has kind of different implications altogether is it makes me sick to my stomach that we're gonna approve a budget at some point here in the process that's gonna use reserves towards operational expenses in any way, shape or form. And I just wanna, I just wanna put that up there, because it's creating a inherently structural issue with our budget that has impacts, it does nothing but kick hard decisions down the, down the road for us. What errors are we specifically doing?
So we, I will, hold please.
Hold please.
So on the December eighteenth packet, we gave you a memo on where we are using reserves in this budget.
Do you believe you?
So on, so it's probably in your email from December eight fifteen or in the packet for December eighteenth. So we are using OCC reserves to balance the, as we moved it over to the general fund to keep the general, hold the general fund harmless. We are using it for the fire equipment that we've talked about tonight. We are using it to fund CIP. We are using funds in the TIF budget, because we are not allocated, we're not paying ourselves as much for the CDC. Uh, sorry, two different things. We're using a CDC fund because we are not paying ourselves the full amount of our obligated payment. We are using it in a TIF budget to meet our debt service ratio. And we're using a small amount in the meals program budget, the community services fund and to, in the thrive budget to fund the thrive director.
Which was moved out of the general fund.
And that's probably the one that I, I feel like is, how much was that one?
Thirty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-seven.
I struggle with that a lot too.
So the other ones, I, I've, I can come to peace with because either they're one-time costs or like the OCC has been a structural issue. Or we have ongoing long-term plans for addressing them, like the TIF budget. So next year, you're starting with a thirty-seven thousand dollar budget deficit on the thrive director position.
And again, the rationale behind that was that is a position that's really solely administering a service delivery system that is an enterprise fund itself. So to the extent that we are, have, I don't like being called, have special revenue funds where revenue should be paying for expenses, it's our obligation to figure out how to make that work.
And part of the discussion was around freeing up some of, if there's these times. And part of the discussion was around freeing up some of, if there's these time to.
Increase.
Increase participation in a program. So, I mean, I agree, it's something that closely, if supported, something I closely pay attention to. And I think there was a discussion and rationale provided for why that wasn't necessarily risky. And I would have concerns about cost of families going up in order to fund the position.
Which I think would be likely the concern coming back to the discussion next year if increased enrollment doesn't actualize and being able to fund the additional cost to the program of moving that position over.
But the chances of getting thirty-seven thousand dollars of additional revenue is zero.
Not a threat.
I mean, that would be pulling a rabbit out of our hats.
You're big with.
Pulling an elephant out of our hats.
Be pulling a rabbit out of someone.
I just, I mean, that's just, all that is, is handing ourselves a decision to make next year. Yeah, I bet you are. You know, from, from, uh, going through the budget, there's, there's things that I think we probably would have talked about quite a bit in the leadership budget in terms of whether or not, um, we would parse them differently. Just that practice in and of itself is something I have a real issue with. And I think, I just, if we're gonna approve a budget with that, I want us to be really upfront with that. I mean, this goes back to a three to two vote that happened to use reserves, uh, two, three years ago, right? We went right back to that same conversation, but, um, you know, I, I, I just would challenge us to artificially keep a tax rate down and building in a structural deficit because a number sounds good to us. I struggle with that. Um, so if it's three cents, it's three cents. And we do the right thing on the budget, I won't say the right thing, that's a, that was very poor choice of words. I apologize for that. Um, but we, we, um, accurately depict what the financial situation is. Or we, we go that route, soften the blow for one year and stay at, um, one point one nine percent because of, you know.
Ooh, even better, one point one nine.
One point.
One point nine one.
Thank you. Um, so I just throw that out there for consideration and an option.
Well, I think that's good feedback for Jesse to consider when you're looking at three proposals. You know, restructuring the administrative team, well, that may, might, might make sense. You know, does that, is that the high, I, I don't know. I think when you're thinking about operational costs being sustained by, uh, reserves, you know, Seth, I think that's a good, very good point. And I think we should try to stay away from that as much as possible. So.
So is that direction to put thirty-eight thousand back into this budget as well?
That'd be three quarters of a cent. So if you were at, let's say you just took the straight leadership proposal, you'd be at, you'd be at three, almost exactly.
I mean, I thought the idea with this thirty-seven for the Thrive director was that it was gonna be a year for this position with freedom of time or whatever to try to increase enrollment. Isn't that the, isn't that strategically why that was moved like that? You know, letting that flesh itself out of, not trying to kick this can down the road for you.
We're getting ready to get a dose of honesty, to see it.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's the same answer. I think that, um, and I, I will own this decision, that when you have special revenue for, funds, so the intent of the city is that the cost of this program is going to be borne by the revenues coming into the program, that is, is my obligation to have the program support itself. So to the extent it doesn't, we can use general fund taxpayer dollars to subsidize that program, but that is a different value statement than saying we're gonna use the, the revenues from this program to support this program. So the reason it was taken out was to say, we're gonna treat it as a special revenue fund as it's established. We're gonna have the revenues match the expenditures and we're just gonna try and figure out how to get there. And if we can't get there, then that's it. There are, if we can't get there, then there are different, do we have the right staffing level? Do we need to expand? Do we need to staff differently? There are other questions we can ask if we can't make that happen. But as it's been set up as that kind of special revenue fund, why should the general fund taxpayers be subsidizing it? You can make that, you can make that determination. You can say right now, we want the general fund taxpayers to subsidize it, but that's different than having an enterprise fund. In that case, we should probably pull it into the general fund like over time. I'm not saying we do that this year.
Which is what happened with OCC. Except for in that case, we were given a special little pot of money to subsidize the building and help it flow. And we just drew off it to the point where it was financially insoluble over time from a long-term perspective.
For clarity, the Thrive and other community service programs are rolled into the general fund for financial reporting purposes.
It's not, it's not actually, it's an enterprise, okay, a special fund.
I don't know that the, what I said was guidance to put thirty-seven thousand dollars back in the budget. Maybe that's what Seth, where Seth was headed. But, uh, but I think it's a.
Feel like a name now, get it over with. What about a portion of it?
There's already a portion of it.
If I could just get like fifteen thousand back in. Correct.
Well, I think the risk, I think it is, I don't, and I don't know who said it, but said that it wasn't kicking the can down the road in the conversation. I think it is, I think it's setting up a really difficult conversation next year where we have to decide whether or not we cut staffing or, um, increase program costs to a program that we as a body have said is important to be available for members of our community.
Or simply continue to subsidize it from reserves instead of asking for it upfront from the general fund. I mean, there's still, it doesn't mean you have to increase rates. It means you can continue to do what Seth hates, but it's like, like Jesse was saying, essentially the same thing. It's, do you wanna see if the program survives and subsidize what you need to? Or you wanna ask for all the money upfront?
Right, but there's, I'm, no offense, but there was inherent issue with that because it's not a special fund. It's not, it's actually not. So it is, it's already being supported, that's, my, it's already being supported by.
It's not supported by tax. It, it currently is with the position being one-third funded out of the general fund.
Right.
Um, but just because I roll things together for financial reporting purposes does not mean that they are subsidized by the city. We have a number of things that are self-supported that we do roll into the general fund. Rental registry gets rolled into the general fund, that is fully self-supporting.
It's a way historically this city has chosen to track self-supporting program areas.
No, yeah, I'm not confused as to what those are. What was the original thinking behind having general contrib, general fund contribution to the Thrive director in general? Isn't it because there's a lot of general fund type work being done by that position? Isn't that the? Yeah, I remember voting on that. So I, I just bounced back to it, that's, that's one way of compartmentalizing the argument, but there, that is general fund work, I guess is the way it's always, or, or it should have never been done in the first place, right? So it's, I mean, either we made a really like, you know, we made a philosophical error in the first place in structuring it that way and we should have never structured that, that way, or it's getting general fund contribution for a reason. And there's, there's a basis for it. So, I don't know. I guess that still doesn't help me. I guess if people are comfortable with the use of reserves, I'm, I'm gonna drop it as I've, I've always been willing to do when we get to these conversations and discussions.
I, I have a, just a question for myself. Just to go back because the conversation was quite a while ago. But what is the impact to ability of staff to dedicate time to looking at childcare opportunities? And Winuski, with moving it over to Thrive, is that diminished capacity to do so?
I mean, I think the trajectory is yes, that will diminish capacity. I think by requiring the Thrive program budget to float, knowing that salary costs, as you said, everything is gonna price to focus more on and we're on permanent size and probably scaling up. Um, and I think that that's gonna inherently have an impact on the kind of more community level, system level work that to set upon, I think was part of why, um, history position got flushed out from a pair of part-time seasonal directors to a full-time grant position, so.
But let's also keep in mind that the, the time she has spent on childcare has been grant-funded time. It hasn't been Thrive revenue time nor general fund support time. In theory, it should have been grant-supported time.
And so, and there wasn't a vision for that work to continue past that grant expiration or?
Right.
And what do, so since we're still in the midst of discussion around the Promise Communities grant, what's the trajectory? How much money's left there? How is that going to be spent if we were moving this position entirely over to Thrive? Like, what's, and if, so how would that money be spent if there wasn't a person to spend it? Because we're having the Thrive director be entirely in the Thrive realm.
Have we found, so I know there was the discussion about additional grant funds to fund her, but I think that was this fiscal year.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about, with a few funders, about the possibility of extending, uh, funding sources outside of Proms Community grant to support the continued work for that position on the Proms Community project. Um, the Proms Community funds for that position expired in December, as the budget is currently constructed.
Okay.
And I think because we're trying to make our core operating hesitant to minimize the amount of funding for a childcare center in the name of kind of adding out our securities position. So, is, is it a conversation we had, yes, but I think the philosophical decision has been we want to keep as much resource available for getting that service up and running as we can.
I think that answers my question, that the money we had from Proms Communities grant ran up in December. Was this?
For salary, please.
For, for salary, yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, is there anything, uh, also just because I kind of just threw a wild card, uh, in there, like from a, it's not on the sheet for, you know, the standard proposals in front of us. Is there also anything from the right column that anybody wants to bring up? Or I guess I would say fight for particularly hard? I mean, right now, we're discussing, um, budget proposals that eliminate, for example, our contributions of Winuski Valley Park's, Park's district.
It doesn't eliminate the contribution entirely, does it?
No, it keeps us at the same level.
The same level as this year, just increases it to what they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're correct, that's a good point. But I guess, is there anything on there that anybody wants to talk about bringing over? If you're gonna start as the one point nine one baseline? Is there any other compelling argument to be made, or is everybody accepting the recommendation? Otherwise, if you start with that one point nine one baseline?
It seems so insignificant, but at the time that we were going over the budgets and we talked about the police not getting the cameras on the, on the vehicles, that to me stood out as, uh, and it's kind of a miniscule line item up there at two thousand dollars, but there's been a few occasions over the last couple of years where that would have been a very handy device to have in place, so.
There's potential we can get that from, uh, money from a drug seizure or something, right? If we got that, we could potentially put that towards cameras if we wanted, because that would be equipment that we wouldn't otherwise have. Isn't that like the stipulation on that money or something?
Supplemental amounts of plan.
So, so, I mean, a couple more drug glasses.
I was like, where is this gonna go?
I don't know where this is going with that. The point is that there could be money for these, it's not saying like, what I'm saying is like, with the amount, uh, you know.
I'm just answering Seth's question, was there anything else that stood out to anybody? And that was one of those things that stood out to me as being relatively important that seemed to get brushed aside pretty quickly.
Yeah, I was just trying to say that I, I don't think it's necessarily brushed aside. I think it is right here, but if it's, uh, as crucial a piece of equipment, which I, which I agree with you, but I think there could be money for it, um, depending, it's not guaranteed, but.
Magic money.
Every officer has a body cam, I feel a lot more.
Body cameras.
We're not gonna have cameras.
They're not, it's polarized.
But every officer has a body cam.
Body cams are already done, this is just a vehicle, two vehicles.
I think the, so with the admin proposal that changes and makes that one point nine one not exist, the discussion's really different for me. Were that not in the mix, I do think just as a value, um, training for professional development, that eight thousand dollar line is something I would wanna have some more discussions around. I think it's incredibly important we invest in our employees. Not only will that create, um, increased quality of services for our residents, but it will increase retention. And I think that that is important for us to, that's an important value that I have. I don't necessarily look at that full amount, but I do think that that's a discussion I would have wanted to have had we not been thrown into this position of now discussing that administrative proposal. If we were just, if, let's, you know, erase that, we were like, okay, the leadership proposal's at one point nine one percent. Let's look at these columns, that would have been an area where I'd wanna have some discussion around.
Now's the time to do that. I mean, that's, there's nothing special about two point one five percent. I mean, it can be two point three percent. Or a round number. So, you know, if it's, in the past, what we've done is if there's a particularly compelling argument, you put that in there and kind of, it's a temperature take of, you know, how that matches up between the other things and, and on the list, but. A little different with this one, but.
So these two want one nine one. Where, where are you coming? Well, we gotta, at some point in time, we gotta send these people to look for a number. And that number needs to be, uh, agreed upon by all of us, so.
I didn't say one point nine one, I said three, three scenarios to get us below two.
To get below two, one nine one and two.
Yeah.
How about you, Eric?
Are you sick, too?
No, lost my voice at my daughter's basketball game.
It's a perpetual winter.
I mean, do we fully spend that training budget every year, or does this seem like?
This is, so this is one of those backwards ones, actually, that I use this spreadsheet because it was easier than trying to quickly updo the other one. So this is an eight thousand dollars that we had in the level services budget put in in addition to, um, what we're currently carrying for professional development, so this would be eight thousand more than we have this year, which we as a leadership team think is important, but when it was weighed against other things. So this would be level funding professional development from last year.
Understood.
And this is the first year where we've done a whole training budget, so we aren't really sure how we're gonna come out at the end of the year. When it was previously siloed within departments, the training budget was not fully spent, but we did not have somebody that was going through and administering citywide training. So we now have Julie that's looking at, um, full citywide training for things that we needed, and we've done a lot of those.
Gotcha.
So I guess where I sit is I would be, I'm very interested in the concept of, um, coming back with what, you know, it sounds like there's interest from the other counselors on what could three oper, three options to get under two percent look like? And I'd be super interested in looking at what your recommendations on that might be. I don't necessarily feel beholden to that, but I think it's an important discussion. You know, I think under two percent is a lot more palatable, more because there's the threshold of moving from a whole number to another whole number, but I don't think there's necessarily anything that is magic between one point nine eight percent and two point oh eight percent or two point one five percent. But I, but if that's the will of the council, I would be really, you know, and I, so I feel on board with seeing what some options might be.
I'm happy with anything below three.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm comfortable at the two point one five level, I'll say that. I'm not comfortable with how we got to the two point fi, one five level. I would like that to be reevaluated. I think there are other things on this list that I find to be more, in, in my own personal opinion, to be more important um, than funding. opinion, to be more important than funding an admin position or, I'm not sure, is it a secretarial position? I don't really know what the role is, but I think you spoke before about the possibility of going back to the two-part-time positions and, and having that come out at a, at a zero impact, and I think if that's an option and we can use that twelve thousand dollars toward other options, then I think that's, you know, like maybe toward Thrive. Then I think that that's a better use of that twelve thousand dollars than what we're originally talking about, but I am comfortable at the two-point-one-five.
Do we know what it would look like, so if we were to take, if we were to take that twelve thousand dollars to do what Brian and Seth have been talking about, to pull some of Thrive back in to the general fund, what percentage of staff time that would allow that individual to contribute to more broadly services for youth, et cetera?
Roughly twelve and a half.
Twelve and a half percent, okay.
What was the, what?
Oh, that makes sense.
Roughly what percentage would the twelve thousand buy of the Thrive position?
Because I think, I mean, in addition to the concerns that Seth raises about using one-time money to fund ongoing expenses, what we are, are also losing is the ability of that staff member to contribute to higher level discussions because they have to be a hundred percent focused on Thrive.
Because that's the way that's going to work, right? They're magically going to stop doing everything that they were doing and only focus on that? Let's, isn't that the way fund accounting works? Of course it is. I, I mean, I, I hear you, I mean, that's clearly, I mean, I, I respect that a great deal. I mean, from a theoretical standpoint, I think that again goes back to deciding, yeah. I mean, it's a hard, it's a hard portion of a principle to argue, you know? I, I'm, I'm hearing that there's some support for above one-point-nine-one, that two-point-one-five or two-point-one-six is not unpalatable to everybody? Is that a fair statement?
It is for my stuff.
No. Yeah.
I wouldn't say it's unpalatable, I just want to know the best way to get there.
Yeah.
You know?
And you don't want to be part of that decision, you want that to be presented back, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think instead of just saying three at one particular level, I think there are some people here who are fine at the two-point, two-point-one range.
Yeah, I feel comfortable there.
It sounds like there's three potentially at that range that are comfortable?
Count votes.
We generally have unanimous votes on budgets, we can change that.
So, well, I'm just saying, if we're going to have, if we're going to have scenarios constructed and brought back to us, that if three people think that, you know, two-point-one is, is a tolerable, two-point-one-five, two-point-one-six is a tolerable place to be, that we obviously also see proposals at that level too, or scenarios at that level as well.
So you're looking for three scenarios at one-point-nine-one and three at two-point-one-five?
I don't care how many are at two-point-one-five. I, I haven't heard anything specific that people have highlighted where they need to see different scenarios at two-point-one-five, six. Are there different options, two-point-one-five, six people?
Well, what I've heard is staffing the admin or subsidizing Thrive.
Yeah.
So there's at least two.
There's two. Is there a third specific scenario?
So I, I, I would ask that if you're going to challenge us to do this, let us, let the leadership team think about what they would consider the most important to add back in.
That's fine, let's bring something back, though, that if we, if there's a desire to get specific, that we have flexibility on that. I mean, right, so what I'm saying is that what I don't think is okay is for us just to have those with zero flexibility next time. I think that we need to have a model that will allow us to make adjustments if that's what people would like to do. Does that make sense?
Meaning the sheet, I think he means the sheet.
Proposals, make the proposals as, as, as you guys see fit. I think you've been given the, the two value pieces that people are concerned about, right?
We still need to play Tetris a little bit on our own, as you're saying.
Well, I think what you're saying is we might get these proposals and then we start to pick pieces and change.
Then there could be an item, somebody's like, well, wait a second.
Yeah, and if you can't move numbers, then...
So I think it's fine to, for you guys to do that, with just the understanding that, again, it could come down to us saying, like, we have, we have an issue with that and want to, want to talk about it, to actually change it. Good? One-nine, two, two-point-one-six?
I'm, I'm moving down to one-point-zero.
I guess we better call this before Brian.
Yeah, before he gets any lower.
I guess I just don't, I don't see a lot of broom in that, I, to go to Brian Corrigan's point earlier, there aren't a lot of items where I can look at and say, oh, that's easy shaving to start getting our way down there without drastically impacting services to residents. So that's where I...
I think there are other ways to find it, to be totally honest. I think that's what we're going to get in these other proposals. I think it's important. Respect.
I look forward to looking at it.
And then I guess, the other thing I, well, nah, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns from council? Questions, comments, concerns from public? Thank you guys for all of your work on this, very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we have completed the city council agenda for Monday, January twenty-second, twenty-eighteen. I would entertain a motion adjourned. Motion by Nicole, second by Brian Corrigan. Any further discussion? If anyone's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Almost said by Nicole or a vote.